Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call this meeting to order for our July 13, 2023 regular board meeting. Welcome everybody here today, ones that are in the courtroom, plus the ones that are out here in the virtual world. Our first item on our agenda today is the indication by Pastor Lee Farmer.
Good evening.
Good evening.
A prayer for you. Gracious God, thank you for the blessings of this community, the opportunity to live in such a special place. Thank you for our voter supervisors and what they're willing to do to make sure that our needs are taken care of. We pray tonight that you'll guide their wisdom and actions, and they'll be the best for our community. For it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Thank you. Next is the pledge of allegiance. Kurt Hobson, would you lead us in pledge of allegiance?
To the flag of the United States of America, as to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, our next item would be the approval of the agenda. Do we have any deletions or additions to it?
Yes, Chairman, we do have a change with VDOT is not going to be able to make it tonight. So if there's anything that the board has for me to send back to them, I can take that information, but they had other conflicts tonight.
Okay, all right, that's fine. That is fine.
With the public hearings, the first six in dealing with the new construction and Mr. Jett's at the end, could we put him first if he's here?
You're talking about the public hearings for Steven Jett to move him up to the first of it?
Yes.
Before all the rentals?
Yes.
All right. How does the board feel about that?
Fine with me.
All right.
Fair to him.
You need anything other than that, Ludlum?
Yes.
All right.
I believe we approved the agenda with the deletion of VDOT and changing the order of the public hearings. Mr. Jett first and the others afterwards.
All right, that is fine.
When do you want us to give your concerns about VDOT?
We can do that under the VDOT section. We don't need that now.
All right, we have a motion. Any other discussion? And did I get a second on that motion? All right, got a second. All right, no other discussion. All of us in favor say aye. Aye. All right, and next item would be the approval of amendments. We have amendments of June the 1st, 23, which was a special meeting, June the 8th, which was our regular meeting, June the 15th was a special meeting, and June the 20th was a special meeting, June the 22nd was a special meeting. Are there any additions or deletions to those minutes?
No, I moved and we approved all of them.
All of them, all right. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, all of us in favor say aye.
All right.
All right, next item would be our presentations. We have a presentation here from All Points Broadband, Tom Enns. Is Mr. Enns here tonight?
Yes, can you all hear me on the Zoom?
Yes, sir, we can certainly hear you. Glad to have you here today.
Great, thank you for the opportunity to provide an update. Give me one second, I will pull up my presentation. Oh, I think someone needs to enable screen sharing for participants.
All right, Matt, can you take care of that? You got it, Rob? All right, Mr. Enns.
All right, thank you again. Sorry for the delay. If you can see up on the screen, I have some prepared slides from All Points, and then staff asked me to review in general the broadband funding available from the Infrastructure Act, so I can hit that at the end, but we'll do the prepared slides first. So project status, the three things we focus on are middle mile capacity in place, so that in this project is from Dominion Energy Virginia. They are nearly complete. Maybe there's some water crossings or special permits or some final splicing that they need to do in Northumberland, but they are essentially complete. I have a picture of their drill going under the, one of the river crossings coming up, but they are nearly complete with their middle mile. The next step is the utility pole make-ready process. So before All Points Broadband can attach our fiber to a Dominion or NNEC pole, we go out and we field that and report what we think needs to happen to the pole, if anything, and the electric utilities review that, approve it, and get that information back to us. That make-ready construction is underway, you know, across the region and is nearly complete in Northumberland County. And as soon as each section of the fiber network has all of their poles made ready, then we can release those miles of fiber construction to our contractors and our crews, and they can go out and start building. But until the last pole is ready in a fiber service area, we can't release the construction for the whole fiber service area. So we're focused on the last couple percentage points of poles in Northumberland, but we've made a lot of progress. I'm sure you all have seen trucks all over the place, upgrading poles, making things, making the electric grid ready for our fiber attachment. And three, you know, most importantly, related to this pole make-ready process is we need a queue of constructible miles ready for construction. In Northumberland, right now, we have released 130 miles. When I put this presentation together, and we've actually added 10 more miles since I put this together, and there's construction going on on the other end of the Northern Neck up in King George as well. All of the materials for our outside plant, that is what OSP stands for, all of our materials are on schedule, inventory levels consistent with the plan. We have an innovative way to manage our supply chain that includes sharing a warehouse with Northern Neck up in Richmond County. And then I want to make sure to remind folks that we can do ongoing construction write-outs, see some cabinet installations. For any supervisor who's interested, just email me, you know, or county staff, we communicate multiple times a day. So if you want to go out and see some construction, let us know, and we will coordinate that. Likewise, there is frequent communication between All Points, Dominion, and NNEC. We're completing about 400 to 800 pole attachment notice proceeds per week across the region. It's winding down in some portions of Northumberland as that process is being completed, but still constant communication with our electric utility partners. And, you know, similarly to the inventory management for NNEC, you know, the electric utilities are really breaking the mold on the numbers of poles that they are reviewing and approving. I think for Northern Neck Electric Co-op, it's something like 170 times the number of poles they were processing before this project started. So huge investment in the electric grid that's, you know, not counted as broadband investment and great partners to be working with. We, in Phase Two of the Northern Neck project, with only a small portion in Northumberland, we are nearing completion for that milestone. And then the billing for Phase One, which is most of Northumberland, we're going to pause that until the network is complete in your county. To date, we've reported about $26 million of investment to DHCD. I think the county portion of that has been about $240,000 or $250,000, and we won't seek the remainder of the first portion until we're basically done in the county. Some of the things you may be seeing going on along the side of the road. We have two different ways of installing network cabinets. The one on the left, that's a pad-mounted cabinet in Northumberland. The one in the center is a pole-mounted cabinet. So we put in the telephone pole, this is in a VDOT right away. We get an electric meter and bring in the fiber cables. There, we regenerate the broadband signal and pump it out to the rest of the network. And then on the far right-hand side, you can see the kind of network equipment, backup batteries, security features that go into a cabinet. This is an electrified one that's near middle mile where we connect to Dominion upstream internet or if we need a Verizon or some other kind of provider, this is the usual connection point. And this is typically a good thing for, you know, if a supervisor is interested in going out and seeing something in the field, this is easy, it's at ground level, you can see it, happy to coordinate that kind of activity. So we're going to start providing more and more details about the poles, the make-ready pole status. So in the, this is all of the fiber service areas on the Northern Neck. As you can see, the Northumberland ones are nearing completion. So the higher the green bar is in your section, the more poles have been made ready. So there's several in Northumberland that are just about to be complete, and once that bar is fully green, we will send all of the miles in that fiber service area to our construction crews. Here is a mileage update for the northern section of Northumberland County. So Northumberland County is split into two sections. I'll get to that in a second. But in the northern area, there are six fiber service areas. Right now, we've built and constructed 30% of the miles. There are another 43.3% that are under construction right now and available for contractors. And then as soon as all of the poles are made ready in the remaining fiber service area, we will release the last 25%. So this is a table. I know that the county has asked for more data in the past. This is a table that we're going to start providing on a monthly basis. It's a lot of information, but it's helpful for you all, you know, as you communicate to your constituents. Here is a map of this northern Northumberland section. RTC stands for Release to Construction. So the green lines, the last mile fiber has been built and constructed there. The orange lines are under construction, so they may have been completed and a contractor hasn't reported it to us yet or they're under construction right now. The yellow lines remain to be released to construction. But as you can see, there's a lot of progress going on. I'm sure you all are seeing trucks all over the place. I think the next map I have is from two weeks ago, and you'll scroll back and forth to see the progress. But this is what it looked like two weeks ago, or two and a half weeks ago. And all those yellow lines down in the middle section are now orange, and you see a whole lot more green up here. So we're making a lot of progress. We'll continue to share this map. We have another version for staff that we will send, you know, as questions come in. And, you know, constituents and homeowners are asking about whether or not, or who is constructing fiber on my road. While it's safe to assume that it's All Points Broadband, this map is helpful for... I included a slide from Dominion Energy Virginia's update to the region last month. This is up on a river crossing, an underground crossing. So what you see here, it's called a directional drill. So they push a drill in 10 or 12-foot sections completely under the river and pop up on the other side, and then they attach that drill head to a conduit and pull it back under the river and pull it out at 10 or 12-foot sections at a time. So I'm sure you've seen this construction going on. I just wanted to make sure that everyone knew what the difference is. When you get to someone's home, it's much smaller, it's remote-controlled, it's not nearly as invasive when we go underground, but a lot of homeowners will see underground construction. This is the type of device that we'll have. There's a spool of cable that runs on some tracks here, and it'll implant the cable in the ground. It's a direct berry. We work with the homeowner to make sure we don't hit any irrigation lines or, you know, invisible dog fences. We do a lot of the missed utility well in advance. So most homes will have some combination of aerial and underground drop to their home, and this is the type of device that we would use for an underground drop. On the network side, I'm going to zoom in here, see if you can show you. So we will put terminals up on every single wire outside of a neighborhood, and the one in the center of this image has six or eight pre-terminated connections. So it looks like a, kind of like an Ethernet port on your computer. And our technician would come here and plug this in and run a cable down a bunch of poles and into the ground to get to someone's home. And on the outside of the home, we're going to put this little gray box in the center and then connect the wire inside. We don't do this typically until a customer signs up. So they'll go to the website, they'll pre-register, or they'll read a flyer or see a yard sign, and they'll go to the website, they'll be notified that they can sign up for service. A crew will come, connect the cable terminal on the left to the gray box on the right at, kind of at our convenience and scheduling. And then for the inside home install, we do coordinate that. We require a homeowner to be home for that. We show them how to connect to the internet, show them how to use the All Points app. And it's usually a pretty smooth process once they get the drop made to their home. I have some information about the pricing and length for that. You know, one thing that we do, we do see is for Northern Neck Electric Co-op poles, we get a customer request, and there may be poles down their driveway to get to their house. And those electric poles just serve that customer. We can attach to those poles and tell NNEC afterwards, and there's no delay. In case of a, if it's a Dominion customer, there is more time between a customer install request and the actual work to be completed because all of those Dominion drop poles go through the same make-ready process as their normal poles. So a little bit different between the two electric utilities, but either way, this is what it looks like at either end of a customer install. I want to touch on the schedule. The next event that we have in Northumberland County is going to be a network lighting event or a customer lighting event, and we're going to invite supervisors to come out to the field, to a home or a business that we are connecting. And right now, that's looking like maybe the end of July, but maybe to be safe, we're going to set it. It's probably going to be in August, in early August at this point. In September, the rest of the northern Northumberland network will be substantially complete, meaning just about every customer can sign up for service. You know, if there's someone who can't sign up for service, or if there's a section of that network that's not complete, it's because we're waiting on a special permit or... There are cases where electric utility poles have been made ready for All Points, and there is a third-party attacher, so another telecommunications provider, that needs to move their equipment before we can attach. Right now, we have a very good working relationship with Breeze Line in instances where Breeze Line is currently attached to where an electric pole owner has determined we should be in the future. And they're pretty good about coordinating when they move their equipment. Some of the other attachers, and there's not very many, but some of the other attachers take the full 90 days to wait to move their equipment after they've been told to by the electric utility pole owner. So there could be some cases that they don't have their network complete by then, but substantially complete in September. Due to the network design and, you know, knowing that this is going to be a 20-plus-year infrastructure investment, we had to make some changes to the way the network is designed for the lower section of Northumberland County. There, let's see, the, these cabinets that serve the lower section of Northumberland are going to be receiving their internet signal, the primary one, from the southern section of the Northern Neck, so up through Lancaster County. And while they have a redundant network, you know, back and forth on both ends of the Northern Neck, they will primarily be served from the southern portion. So we split the design of Northumberland County between north and south. And there's a section of Northumberland County that is going to take some extra time to complete. You know, I'd be happy to talk to supervisors in that area to communicate more clearly on that timeline. But this northern section of Northumberland is going to be complete in September, and the rest is going to begin early next year.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Our computer crashed in here. I'm on my laptop right now. We're rebooting. We'll have you back in a second.
Okay.
Mr. Enns, we are back online again.
Great. So I wanted to touch on the service levels and affordability. This is a reminder with every presentation to send folks to affordableconnectivity.gov. They can check to see if they qualify for a $30 a month discount. This is not just for All Points. This is, all broadband providers have this discount available for households that qualify either income-based, or if you have a child, a school that offers free or reduced lunch, a number of other qualifiers always suggest to send people there to get that $30 a month discount. We will have that up on our website at every junction point for a customer, but it is managed by a third party because that's the way the federal government wants the database managed. But we have it all on our website. There'll be three initial service tiers with the pricing here on the screen. Right now, the highest service level will be a gigabit to each home. But I think as we've explained in the past, you know, this is a long-term investment. The network that we're building today is called, the architecture is called XGS-PON, and that stands for 10 gigabits symmetrical in each direction. So as customer demand expands over time and grows dramatically, as it has been, we can easily upgrade the network and the service available to each resident at a minimal cost because of the way that we are designing and constructing it today. The most important cost savings for all customers in this program is that their install fee is dramatically lower than what it would be otherwise. I got a, an email from Drew earlier this week. I think a customer received a quote from another provider for $16,000 or $17,000 for their install fee. And that is exactly what this program is designed to avoid. So for customers in this grant program, they're within 500 feet of the internet cable that we've already built, it's a $99 install fee. Up to 1,000 feet, we're not charging another dollar per foot. But if you go beyond 1,000 feet, we're charging $2 per foot for standard installation to your home. So if you have a really long driveway, you know, you're still going to have to pay a little bit, but this is dramatically lower than what the cost would be otherwise. And it's lower than what we had planned in our grant application. Now, if we tell a customer that, you know, sir or ma'am, your install is going to be an aerial fiber along your telephone poles to your home, and you say that you want it to be underground and go, you know, around the crepe myrtle to the west side of the house, and it's something different than what we recommend, then there would be a cost associated with that, and we would be transparent about our cost. But if you do what we recommend, which is 99% of the time, going to follow the electric utility service, then this is the price for that. As I mentioned earlier, the in-home portion is scheduled at a customer's convenience. A lot of the outside work, you know, that depends on finding and locating existing underground utilities. And, you know, when we have crews in the neighborhood, we like to do as many of those outside drops as possible just to keep the cost down and keep their productivity up. But certainly, if we're going in someone's home, you know, obviously, we need to coordinate that with a homeowner. Right now, I believe the way that they can do that, once they sign up, is they can pick a date and a time window, and our technicians will show up there and confirm the time. So that's generally what the install will look like. So in terms of communicating with customers, about 90 days in advance, we will send a direct mailer out to all the locations that can sign up. We've been sending mailers out in Northumberland. And then after you can actually sign up for service, we'll continue sending out mailers. We'll continue to do boots-on-the-ground advertising, like door hangers and yard signs. And I have a couple of slides of what the signup website looks like after this. So you have an address in Mossburg here. You put your address in at apbfiber.com. You check, you click the check of availability, and you'll get a notice that says, "Great news, you can sign up for service." Put in your contact info, and then click on Select Services, and we will put in your billing information. And then the moment you can sign up for your install, we'll send you a notification for that. But right now, there's a couple sections of the county who get this notice, have a map of that. So all of these areas, all of these homes that are in the highlighted area right now, when they go to apbfiber.com, they get the notice, you know, "Great news, you can sign up." As more areas are available, we will change their settings on the website and provide a map of those areas as well. Right now, if you're outside of the highlighted area, like this place on Fruit Plain Road, you would get a notice that says you're inside a planned service area. Services will be available to you soon. And we strongly encourage people to put in their contact info, their name and their email, and click the button, "Go to survey," and answer, you know, any questions that may pop up based on your address. I want to remind folks that you do not have to pre-register to be included in the project. You are in the grant project area, you know, whether you like it or not. If your address was in the grant, you're in this project, but you do have to go through the website to pre-register. I would also say that we have a customer support team that is very familiar with hooking up households to broadband for the first time. So if online signup is not convenient or available or easy for you, then we can certainly do that over the phone with our customer support team. You know, our focus at All Points is to bring broadband to unserved communities. So we are very familiar with, you know, walking people through this process. We want to make it as easy as possible. So we strongly encourage the website, but we can also do it over the phone as well. We'll just, we'll have a customer support rep enter the information on your behalf. So that's my portion, and then if you'd like, I was going to run through some of the DHCD slides from a recent presentation on the Broadband Infrastructure Act funding. But happy to answer questions now or at the end.
Any board members have any questions?
Not yet.
Not yet?
I got one.
You got one, Tommy?
Could you review the charge of installation? I saw the $99 for up to 500 feet.
Yes.
500 to 1,000 feet, is it, because you got zero, is it zero or $1 per foot?
It's zero.
Okay, I just, because basically, at the end, zero to 1,000 feet, it's $99.
That's correct.
That's correct, now. You know, in the future, and when the grant program runs out, that zero may become a one.
I understand.
Or two, uh I think in the grant, in the grant application. We had said, we said anything beyond five hundred feet, we would charge our cost. You know, plus some ten percent or something like that.
Right.
But we want people to sign up and take advantage of this program. Uh we're not, you know, installing homes as soon as we had had wished we were. Um so we're doing everything we can to get that cost down and and just basically cover our. Um you know, at least a portion of of our cost, so. That's right.
That piece right there is a good selling point, I can tell you that.
It this is a tremendous cost savings, you're right.
That's all I had, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone else? No more questions at this time.
All right, uh would you like me to to do a quick review of the the B program?
Yes, yes, please.
Okay, one second here. Okay. I I I want to make clear that this is a a slide presentation available on DHCD's uh. This their Virginia Telecommunications Initiative website. It's a presentation that they gave um back in in June. About uh the bead program and you know, I obviously I don't work for DHCD. I probably should have asked for permission to do this, but it's on their website, and I think it's helpful to to go through real quickly. Uh as background, as part of the bipartisan infrastructure law. The the federal um NTIA, which is part of the Commerce Department. Is spending forty two and a half billion dollars to provide um. Basically, the same kind of dollars that that Beatty did for unserved locations across the country. Uh they recently, you know, two weeks ago, announced that Virginia was going to receive one point four eight billion dollars. Um and every state has to come up with a plan on how to spend that money. Uh generally, it's going to go to unserved locations first, but the state has to come up with, you know, the rules and the program for how it works, so. Uh bead is uh gonna fund unserved and underserved locations, and in Virginia, they have spent. A whole lot of money, more than most states, nine hundred and thirty five million dollars to get service to unserved locations. And they're not being penalized in this program, so. Uh effectively, Virginia has paid to provide service to locations, and they have a plan for that. But those locations still got their same dollar amount allocation that another state would have gotten. Uh but Virginia is going to already have a plan for what the federal government is paying them to do, so. We are very fortunate in Virginia that our state broadband pro- program was ahead of the curve. Uh in doing investments like the one in Northumberland and across the northern neck. Um so effectively, they're getting. The same number of dollars uh per location and just more locations are quote unquote unserved, but they already have a plan for them, so. And I'll go quickly through this, you can go to the website and and see this uh as well, but DHCD went out and they they solicited a lot of input from. Um local organizations and internet service providers, you know, including All Points Broadband. Uh and we've provided comments on their uh in their stakeholder engagement process on their first. Initial proposal, so right now, they're in this step, how to to document the award and manage their funds for deployment. And here's the priority, so right now, they gotta go to the unserved areas, that is a. A location that doesn't have twenty five by three megabit per second internet speed. You know, there's not going to be all that many left over that are unserved in Northumberland County. But there there will be some, and you know, example of this came from from county staff uh. Earlier this week or maybe late last week. Someone was building a new home on an undeveloped parcel. Uh that wasn't part of the Beatty project. Yeah, but it's still considered unserved, and so. Uh there's gonna be a number of these that pop up that the state is going to prioritize funding for. Uh if it makes sense for All Points to use bead money. In Northumberland, we're gonna get as much as we can for Northumberland County. If it makes more sense, you know, to do another program, we will do that uh in Northumberland, but. If there are new unserved areas in Northumberland, uh we're gonna identify those and, you know, come up with a plan with the county. Obviously, no more, no more county match, no more state match, this is just between All Points um funding and the federal funding. Step two is underserved areas. Again, not going to be all that much in Northumberland after, you know, our program is done. Um but an example here of what would have been considered. Uh what would be considered underserved is if you have um. A DSL, so that's a copper-based internet service to your home, and you don't have fiber or cable. You may be underserved, uh I don't think there's a lot in Northumberland, but. Um if there are, again, we would find a way to to get those um. Locations included, most of these have already been picked up in our current uh grant application. And then Virginia, like other states, is gonna have money left after number one and number two. And they can do workforce development or setting up broadband adoption programs and affordability. Uh and then other non-deployment uses, which is kind of a catch-all for anything else tangentially, you know, related to broadband. Let's see, so this is saying they're gonna do as many of the. The rules uh and elements of the Virginia Telecommunications Initiative into their bead program. And I think, you know, again, uh Virginia is ahead of the curve in having a a robust. Uh program in place that they can modify to meet the bead requirements. So the um. The area that All Points added, our comments have to do with identifying the unserved and underserved uh locations, so that's what we're going through right now and what they call volume one. Let's see, I'm gonna keep going a little bit. Why two volumes, they can tell you that, so volume one. The section here is, you know, the Virginia's gonna talk about all these different programs that they have available. Right now, in Northumberland, we are doing the Virginia Telecommunications in this initiative. There's another program that is available for uh residents in Northumberland. That are eligible, it's called a line extension customer assistance program. And um the General Assembly had some budget amendments to make this program. Much more user-friendly and available to more homeowners. Uh but as some of you or many of you know, you know, Virginia did not come to an agreement on its budget, so none of the amendments to make this program bigger or better. Uh were passed, but we're still. So hopeful that the line extension customer assistance program can help folks who maybe. Uh for one reason or another fell outside of the Beatty program. But again, this is a way to get uh single customers connected, instead of not paying sixteen thousand dollars. These other programs, I I think are, you know, have already happened, but Virginia's gonna take credit for them. Uh this doesn't really apply for. Let's see, okay, the challenge process and notifying uh identifying unserved locations. This was important for at least All Points to comment on, our recommendation was that. The national broadband maps have gotten much more detailed in terms of showing where providers have certain levels of service, it's based on a location by location basis now. Uh when we started our grant application, it was by census block, so that meant if one location in a census block had service. Then according to the FCC, everyone in that census block was served, obviously that was wrong, it was overstated, but it was the best data that we had. Uh now, it is location by location, and it's a whole lot better, but it's not perfect. Uh and so All Points, we provided some public comments that. You know, just because the map has gotten a lot more accurate. You know, you still need to have a a robust challenge process that matches the way that DHCD set up their Beatty program. Where, you know, non-incumbent providers. Can have a say and have some insight on where the incumbent provider claims to have service. The maps aren't perfect, they they've gotten better, uh we still think that non-incumbents should have a role in that in that process. See here, uh. If needed, I don't think this will apply in Northumberland, but if needed, you know, the the localities can submit challenges to where broadband is and is not available. Um and i- if staff wants to to go through that process, we can identify some areas that we may think. Would apply here, I can't think of any off the top of my head, but. They're gonna make the challenge process open to localities as well. Uh again, they made this 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 program for counties not like Northumberland, where you all have a a plan to get broadband to um. Just about everyone. Uh let's see, what they're saying here is that. The state office challenged the service claims of incumbent providers back in January. And as a result of that, they added about eighty thousand unserved locations. That were considered served on the map beforehand, so. I think that probably got Virginia another two hundred and thirty or two hundred and fifty million dollars. In their uh federal allocation by going through a a rigorous challenge process, so. Um I know some of you all got the word out to uh your your constituents, if they could challenge the broadband map where. And incumbent provider claimed to offer service to them and in fact didn't. You know, that that home would have been included in the seventy nine thousand, so. Uh I appreciate you all who who got the word out on that. And then. There's more details on in here on the the challenge process. Uh again, the state is going to start from the national broadband map. You can challenge it either way, saying, yes, the map is correct. There is service there, or you know, we we think it's incorrect, there's no service, or. Uh there's a number of different ways to to challenge the the existing map. Um but we we don't have the final rules yet, but as soon as that's made available, we'll share that with with county staff. Again, more more details on the challenge. See, uh that must have been the end of their presentation, so. Long story short, there is a lot of money in Virginia, coming to Virginia, one point four eight billion dollars, Virginia is ahead of the curve in terms of closing the digital divide. Uh and they're not being penalized for being ahead of other states, so Virginia is going to have a lot of broadband money in the next couple of years. Um and as they make that available, and if there's any opportunities where we think Northumberland. Uh overall, or individual residents are eligible for that, we are going to do everything we can to get as much of that money to Northumberland County. As the program rules are finalized, we'll share that with. Uh county staff and through the Regional Commission as well. Um I know that the. There are regional affordability uh and adoption plans being developed. And if if we can play a part in that, we will, and obviously share everything with with the county as well, so. Uh with that, I'm happy to take any other questions.
All right, any board members have any questions?
Yeah, I did. Uh I just used your map to search. My house is not there, I'm not worried about that. But I searched places where your wires are running right by, and they says they're not in the service area. What's that mean, is the map, the search feature not mapping, not connecting up to the map yet, or what?
Yeah, well, so. The way the map works is uh there's two criteria that you have to meet to get a response that says you're in a service area or you're near a service area. One is to be in the the grant. The polygon, there's a big shape of the grant application, and the number two, your specific address also has to be uh in the grant, so. As you know, you know, we may be installing wires, our fiber or. Um you know, middle mile fiber is going to pass locations that are considered served, so if you put that address, even though it's next to a wire, put that address in our map. You'll get a response that says, you know, you're not currently in a planned service area. As soon as we close out the grant. And make broadband available to all the locations in the grant. We are then going to start, you know, making service more readily available to folks along the wire who weren't in the initial grant.
Well, I can tell you. Where the wires you're running down is going down a one-way road, a neck. And if people have got wire in front of their house and say, why can't they get it, you need some explaining to do, as they say.
I. We get a lot of those questions, uh and the the sales team, you know, are. Are pretty well experienced in explaining that, but if there are, if there are addresses or locations that you see that. Still doesn't make sense why that person couldn't sign up. Um please send those through county staff, and I will look at them and go through. You know, in addition to to the sales team, but you're right, that's a hard thing to tell. A homeowner on a one-way street down a neck, you know, between two creeks, like where else are you gonna go except for my house? Um but it may be someone at the end who's the only location in the actual grant, so.
So what this grant basically done is building the bridge to Alaska type thing. And so people go by.
So let's say, let's say there are six homes down that street. And the home number six at the end is the only one that's unserved because it had a a really long driveway, right, and so we got grant funding to build to that. Uh the 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 port that I showed you on the on the 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 wire up in the air, it's got six terminals. Uh we're gonna put one there at the end of the driveway, at the end of the the road, so there's six ports for those six homes. And the one who's unserved in the grant, he'll take one of those ports. And then when the the grant program is closed out. You know, we have enough capacity in the network to then go back to the other five homes, and we have five ports there. Uh they can sign up for for service in the future. But, you know, none of that extra cost or time is part of the grant program. So, you know, while this grant program is going on, we do not provide service to a served location.
Okay.
All right, any other board members have any questions? Any staff have any questions?
I wonder who that's gonna serve down my.
All right, Mr. Enz, I don't think we have anyone else has any questions at the time.
Great, thank you all very much, have a nice evening.
All right, thank, thank you for your presentation.
Yes, sir.
I would much rather see presentations like that in person.
What was that, Jamie, I didn't?
I would rather see presentations like that with someone here.
Yeah. Would be better.
Well, I think it's getting to the point, especially like an explanation where the wire goes right in front of their house, hey, I want it, nope, you're not the grant, you can't get it. That's gonna be a tough sell or not sell.
It'll be, yep, will be a tough sell, not sell, and what's gonna be the cost afterwards.
All right. And next was VDOT, but VDOT is not present tonight. Next is a um update on Northumberland County.
No, we want to uh. Stop it, VDOT, but I I'm still concerned about the Romulus strips that are not complete. How about Laburn? So we need to uh let them know. Like for them to know they had, they promised they would do them, but not complete. All right, so I'd like for you to see, see the reason why.
I I can get with uh Mr. Beal.
And I'd like a update as to the status of the pipe replacement on two hundred between the Moradick and Church Road ex uh road loops. Because they've seeded it, but they've got sheet piling on the ball's neck side. Are they, is they gonna leave that in place, or they gonna come back and put in some sort of concrete type uh wall or something? I rode by yesterday, I saw the sheet pile, I saw the ladder up onside the hill, so. I'm just curious. I'm just curious, if that's the way it's done, are they holding off and maybe have to make some designs, I don't know.
All right, anyone else have anything else? All right, if not. We'll move on to our next presentation. We have an update from Northumberland County Public Schools. Dr. Wargrove, Ms. Booth.
Good evening.
Good to see y'all ladies here today.
Blakewise, good, good evening, Mr. Chairman and Supervisors. Um, on June twenty second, the Board of Supervisors approved the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school division budget. And on June twenty-sixth, the Northumberland School Board requested the following in a letter that was sent, which I believe you're in receipt of. Um, that letter is dated June twenty-seventh. The transfer of monies from instruction to other categories to cover a five percent raise for all employees is the first item that the school board requested. The second item is the transfer of funds to cover seven full-time bus driver health insurance and benefits. And Mrs. Booth is gonna talk about that following um, my statement here. The third item, the school board asked for the supervisors to reconsider their appropriation of funds to include the nine point nine percent health insurance increase. As the supervisors already approved coverage of this health insurance increase for all other county agencies. Um, and finally, the school board requested a joint meeting with the supervisors. So I'd like to circle back to that first item. The school board requested the transfer of monies from instruction to other categories to cover a five percent raise for all employees. This would involve in operations and maintenance. The transfer of thirty-one thousand sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. In technology, the transfer of fifteen thousand nine hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-nine cents. And then Mrs. Booth this evening will address the school nutrition and transportation request amounts.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
I'm I'm not sure if you received the letter, I didn't send it over to Mr. Tadlock until later this afternoon, but I would like to read that to you. Um, dear Board of Supervisors, in our school board budget, we requested three hundred sixty-eight thousand two hundred twenty-two dollars. To cover health insurance and benefits for our drivers. We have since found that we actually only have seven drivers who would like to take advantage of this offer. Our estimate for the insurance of these seven drivers is between sixty-seven thousand and eighty-four thousand dollars. We are not able to give an exact amount because it will depend on which plan each employee chooses. The benefits for these drivers would be approximately twenty-three thousand seven hundred fifty dollars if they do not receive a raise this year. And approximately twenty-six thousand one hundred eighty-eight dollars if the funds are transferred for the raise as requested. In a previous letter, the school board requested the transfer of funds from instruction to other categories. To provide all NCPS employees a five percent raise. At that time, we were not aware that the school nutrition budget had been approved as requested. That budget already contains the increase for those employees to receive the five percent raise. At this time, we are requesting your consideration of transferring the twenty-five thousand six hundred fifteen dollars and fifteen cents. From instruction to transportation instead of school nutrition to help offset the cost of the insurance for our drivers.
All right, any board members have any questions?
With school bus drivers, they're gonna have additional duties.
That is correct.
And how many hours would they get? Approximately?
Thirty-seven to forty.
What kind of duties would that be? Would the duties be involved?
It would be after-school runs for athletics, activities, field trips during the school day, as well as the opportunity to serve as a substitute teacher.
Oh, how many after-school duties would, how many, uh? So it'd be after-school duties, substitute teachers. Field trips. Gonna be a lot of hours for the bus drivers to. Not be a lot of trips and all to get. Thirty-seven to forty hours for bus drives. When they only get, what, uh, less than thirty? Just wondering, just wondering how you're gonna make it all up?
Well, undoubtedly, they have a plan to. They're doing, that's really them presenting.
All right, anyone else have any questions?
So you're asking the two amounts, right? You asked in the. First and.
We're asking for. Funds to be transferred from operations and maintenance in the amount of thirty-one thousand sixty-five dollars and seventy-one cents. And also funds transferred from instruction to technology for fifteen thousand nine thirty-two forty-nine. And for funds to be transferred from instruction to transportation in the amount of sixty-two thousand two fifty-nine forty-eight. We appreciate your consideration of that request.
I'm I'm ready for a motion.
I got a question first. By seeing your school board actions, that there were two actions that I want some answers to. Approval of two people to be hired as financial consultants for their continued assistance. With grant reimbursements through October the thirty-first of this year. How much are they being paid total?
We actually have a second part of our report, are you ready for us to segue into that?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then you also said somebody's gonna be a financial consultant for the whole year. I wanna know how much those two people are costing, and then where is that money's coming from?
Okay, I have some of that here, and I'll be glad to answer the rest to the best of my ability. Um, I wanted to let you know that the reconciliations are up to date um, through May. We are currently working on June, that's for revenue and expenditures. Um, there are a few adjustments that need to be made, but the the differences have been identified. And I would like to publicly thank the treasurer and her administrative team for her assistance, their assistance with these reconciliations. I'd also like to provide you with an update on the reimbursements. Since April, the county has received a total of one million six hundred twenty-five thousand fourteen dollars and thirty-one cents in reimbursements. An additional nine hundred fifty-one thousand eight hundred ninety-seven dollars and twenty-six cents is scheduled to be reimbursed tomorrow. And we have about three hundred and thirty-four thousand in reimbursements that have been approved under a pending payment, so we expect to have those funds by the end of July. Since we're still working on the reimbursements daily, I expect the county will actually receive more than that by the end of the month. I'd like to take a couple of minutes to review how the reimbursements actually work. To begin the grant process, we first must complete an application that is submitted to the Virginia Department of Education. In that application, we must be specific as to what our needs are and the financial impact of each item requested. The Department of Education, under guidance from the federal government, then determines how much money we will receive and which projects will be funded. When we receive grant money, it generally works in one of two ways. Typically, the county covers the original cost of the purchase. Once the item has been received, we send documentation of the purchase to the Virginia Department of Education. And the request goes through different levels of approval through the Divin- Virginia Department of Education's online management grant system. Once the final approval has been completed, the funds are deposited directly into the county's bank account through electronic transfer. A second way the funds are deposited into the county's bank account is through electronic transfer prior to the purchases being made. Once we have spent the money on the items approved in the award, we send in documentation for these purchases. For the twenty-three, twenty-four fiscal year, we have implemented some new practices. First, at the school board's regular monthly meetings, I will report on the completion of monthly revenue and expenditure reconciliations. And the Director of Federal Programs will report on the submission and completion of reimbursements against federal grants. In addition, the Director of Special Education will report out on the submission and completion of Medicaid and IDEA reimbursements. Second, in response to our continuing efforts to address areas of improvement noted in the audit. At the monthly school board meeting on Monday, July tenth, the school board approved the following temporary positions. Two part-time consultants who will be providing assistance with federal reimbursements, and they will be paid through ESAR funds. Third, in response to the audit, the school board approved a consulting period with a certified public accountant. Who will be taking a look at past and current finance practices to make recommendations for continuous improvement. The CPA also is in receipt of the county and school divisions audit.
Um, Ms. Booth, can you address how the CPA will be paid?
Yes, the CPA, um, we have a a account code for auditing um, purchases. Um, and so she will be paid through that. We have contracted with her right now, and as soon as she finishes her report, we expect to be done, so that's not something we expect to be ongoing through the school year.
What is the ballpark estimated figure then?
We would need to bring that back to you, Mr. Tomlin. The the CPA is working with us currently, so we can bring you that figure once everything wraps up. We do expect that in the coming weeks.
And how much money do you have in your code for that figure?
I didn't bring that, and I don't wanna give you the wrong answer, so I can let you know.
All right, you say you have a contract for your CPA and your part-time? Is the contract available for the public seat?
Yes, sir.
Is it online or where?
It's a personnel matter, so we could provide you with information, but of course, it would be limited information that doesn't include. Um, personnel information.
Okay, all right.
I'm not sure, once you got a signed contract, that.
You can see um, as well that this was formalized in the school board minutes, as well as in our press release that we issued on Tuesday.
Yeah, I saw it was a re, but I didn't see the dollars attached to it.
Yeah, wasn't any dollars attached to anything?
No. I'm confused.
Kinda hard to prove something when you don't know what your dollars are.
If we have a contract, it's public knowledge.
That's right. I don't care whether it's personal, I mean, if we have a contract, I think, my understanding FOIA says that is open to the public.
And Mr. Tomlin, if I erred in my answer just now, I apologize, so you are right that FOIA, we follow FOIA, we follow FERPA, so. Um, of course, we're not trying to get into a circular discussion right now, we will follow the law and do what is necessary.
All the questions I have.
All right, anyone else have any questions? The additional seventy-four thousand dollars that you got from the state, where is that gonna be spent this year? Is that part of the money you wanna transfer out?
Well, the board hadn't res, hadn't approved it yet.
The money we're asking to have transferred is from instruction.
Well, I can't remember now that.
Yeah.
Gentlemen.
What was uh, Mr. Tomlin's last motion? At a meeting on approval of funds?
Look at the minutes.
But gentlemen, I wanna clarify, the the categorical change would be from what was improved in instruction.
Right.
The number I have is fifteen million nine thirty-eight eight fourteen. So I'm not referencing the number that Mr. Haney just referenced.
Stadlock, am I correct, there was seventy-four thousand dollars additional funding coming from the state this year?
There were, I don't have that information with me, there were additional monies coming from the state, yes, sir.
All right.
And it was the five percent increase on the local side.
Okay.
You could use that to offset the nine point nine percent health insurance increase of two hundred nineteen thousand dollars.
I don't know. I'm just looking.
Mr. Chairman, it was seventy-six thousand eight thirty-nine.
Seventy-six thousand thirty-nine, all right.
Was the the state portion.
All right. That's the additional funding that the school system would receive this year.
Correct. Uh, that's what was estimated in the in the budget.
All right, any board members have any questions?
No, I don't, I'm I'm ready for a motion, though.
All right, I I'm not done yet, Mr. Tom.
Okay, let's let's move on, I mean, it shouldn't be that, that's you.
We are moving along.
Okay.
Since we don't know what the part-time consultant cost or the CPA cost. I say we table this to our next meeting, and you can bring those costs back to us, and then we will make a decision. On.
You you messing with people's livelihood, all right?
I want my numbers.
You messing with people's livelihood.
You are just gonna throw some more money away.
I I said we go ahead and vote on.
My motion is to table this until we get the information back.
Look. You you are messing with people's livelihood. This simple as that, and you mess with people might lead. Because people need the raises like anybody else, the cost of living and all that. And that's what you're doing.
All right, do I have a second on? Second's not required, is any other discussion?
Mr. Long's motion or your motion to table?
I would like the information on what the costs are, and then we can make a decision. That is what I would need.
What, what is the motion? Mr. Long, have you made a motion or Mr. Long made a motion?
My motion is to table this until we get the cost of the CPAs and the consultants, and then we decide.
I wanna do.
I was confused.
All right. That's my motion.
Mr. Haney, may I interject?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, my, when we discussed the auditing line today that I believe is in administration and health. Um, there's a figure of five thousand there. So that's an answer, and then as far as the consultants go. Um, one is being paid, I believe, and I don't wanna misquote this number, but I'm trying to move this. Budget forward and move forward with a decision for our employees. One is being paid eighty-five dollars an hour, and I believe the other, I wanna say it was forty. But again, I'm, you know, I feel like I'm in a situation right now where. I wish these questions had come before the the public meeting so that we could address them, we could have brought that information.
Right.
Um, the money is there. And we, these are part-time positions, this isn't an ongoing employment, it's not a full-time position. Um, you know, we're simply here this evening asking for something that was already appropriated. It's fifteen million nine thirty-eight eight fourteen. We're simply asking for that to be placed in the other categories, so we can give a five percent raise. In addition, we're asking for the coverage of a nine point nine percent health insurance. In addition, we're asking for the coverage of a 9.9% health insurance increase.
All right, Dr. Warco, it's not a matter of whether they're part-time, full-time, whatever. The board needs to know what their costs are.
They fill out a time sheet once they do services.
You said they had a contract. Contract's not available to us either.
They have a supplemental contract, yes, sir.
So we'd like to see the contract also.
That's your opinion.
All right, any other discussion?
Well, I think you're looking at two, you know, let's put it that way. You know, if there's funds, if y'all are contracting with individuals to come in and help you with your finances, you can kind of look at that and say, okay, those are some funds you could also put towards your health insurance. You've got staff there that's supposed to be able to take care of your finances, and you're bringing on more people to take care of finances. And I understand it's been issues, but sitting here and looking at that, okay, if you've got funds to hire these people, then those funds should be used elsewhere.
The two consultants are bringing back millions of dollars to the county coffers, and that's at a deadline of September 30th, when the monies are due. So we're not waiting till September, because the Department of Education is going to be backed up by September. So, you know, this was a very responsive decision. It is not a full, you know, it's not going on, we're just going to keep doing these reimbursements that we're doing daily. Our staff has maxed out doing reimbursements, and yes, we hired some additional part-time people, two of them, to help and assist with that. It's money well-used. And again, I really hope that this evening you would have pushed this forward so that we can do the 5% for all of our employees. We're going to have to issue a second round of contracts. This is all very distracting and time-consuming at a time when we should be getting ready for students to come back to school.
I agree.
Teachers are going to come back July 28th, and we don't even have contracts for all of our employees in place at this time.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, any other discussion? If not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those against?
Nay.
All right, the motion dies. All right, what's your pleasure to the board?
I move that we grant the approval of the money that the, the transfer of the money that the superintendent asked for.
Mr. Long, if you could state the amounts that you want to specifically transfer or...
What was the total amount of that?
Okay, in instruction, there's 15,938,814. We're asking for $31,065.71 to be transferred to operations and maintenance, for 15,932.49 to be transferred to technology, and for 62,259.48 to be transferred to transportation. We're also asking for $220,000 to cover the 9.9% health insurance increase that all of the other agencies received already.
Do you have your total amount?
Do I have the total amount? Well, do you have the total amount?
Well, that's not the way we need the motion. I mean, it needs to be by category, since it's in categories, you've got to make the motion from categories, from the instruction to the various subcategories.
Okay, I'll make a motion from the categories, all right?
Right.
To the, to cover all the, to cover everything that you mentioned. All right?
I'll amend that motion to include, from instruction to administration to health, the amount of 44,988.30. From instruction to operations and maintenance, 31,065.71. From instruction to transportation, 36,643.91. From instruction to school nutrition, 25,615.57. From instruction to technology, 15,932.49. We'll leave the education, come back to that, the insurance do that separately.
Mr. Tomlin, I don't think the school nutrition, they were asking for that to be zeroed out, and the school transport, from instruction to transportation, they were asking for 62, 259.48. I believe that, if that's correct.
That's correct, Mr. Statler.
I'm reading the motion that was in the letter to us, and now you've changed it.
Yeah, that was on the, the second part of that, was with the information we received this afternoon that was on the table.
You talked about not, like, had the questions, like, stuff ahead of time, too.
From instruction to, instead of school nutrition.
Right.
Transportation.
Moving from school nutrition to transportation in the amount of 62,259.48. So everything Mr. Tomlin said was correct, just that one piece.
I would not get an A for that one.
So in transportation, it's 62,000?
259.48.
62,000 to what?
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I don't bother you, second a motion, whatever. Between we got our first and the second.
I got a first and a second in that somewhere.
You can assign the numbers to whoever you want.
All right, they're making a difference to me.
Okay.
All right. Is there any other discussion on this?
All right, just for clarification.
Yeah, we need clarification, but...
So who, it's Mr. Tomlin's motion?
No, make it Mr. Long, because I amended his.
Mr. Long made the motion, and Mr. Tomlin seconded.
Right.
And this is for, to go from instructional to admin and health in the amount of 44,988.30. From instructional to operations and maintenance, 31,065.71. From instructional to transportation, 62,259.48. And from instructional to technology, 15,932.49. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Now, what's the additional money going into transportation for?
To provide the driver's health insurance that Mrs. Booth mentioned.
Provide their health insurance.
Yes, and I think you have a letter that Mrs. Booth just reviewed.
Yeah.
And then we also need the 9.9% health insurance increase.
That's a separate motion.
That's a separate motion.
Yeah. Because that's additional monies.
Additional money.
Yeah, this is, the first motion addresses transferring within what was done, the other one will be a separate.
Yeah, this money's already been approved.
Yeah, that's not additional.
Now, what we're doing now is just looking at transferring it.
Yeah.
All right, do we have any other discussion?
The only thing I would add is the school bus drivers, if they're putting in 37 to 40 hours by the Affordable Care Act, aka Obamacare, they're entitled to insurance anyway.
Yeah.
Because we would deny them that health insurance, we'd be in violation of federal and state law. That's why, that's why when we do part-time workers, we only limit them to 29 hours a week.
That's correct. Correct.
Yeah.
All right, have any other comments? If not, all of those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All of those against?
Aye.
Aye. Two to two. Motion dies. All right, gentlemen, what's your pleasure?
I don't, I don't know what you guys want. I mean, you're playing, just like I say, you're playing with people's livelihood, and I believe if you were in that position, you wouldn't want anyone to play with your livelihood.
I wouldn't want anybody doing it, but I want answers.
Well, hold on now, let me finish, I'll let you finish. Like I say, we have people that depended on the contract to decide if they're going to stay in the county or not. You're going to lose good teachers, and you're going to lose good people, because we keep playing around with something we should go ahead and approve, you know, this simple as that.
How long would it take?
You need to tell the people, the reason, tell the kids, tell the teachers, tell the parents, the reason you're not, you don't want to help, you don't want to help the kids to have the best teachers, you don't want to have the kids to have the best material, whatever they need. Let the public know, you're not in favor of education, you're not in favor of teaching the best, keeping the best teachers. What is it? Let them know.
How long would it take?
Let them know.
How long would it take y'all to get the information that's requested by Mr. Haney?
I can walk across the street and bring it back.
We'd need a little time, but how long would it really did it, and then get it to the board for the board review?
I'm more than happy to go and get it right now.
That's fine with me.
Mr. Haney, can I make a comment?
No, this is not time for comments.
I'm on the board.
This is, this is, this is to get information. Right now, need the information for Dr. Warco and Ms. Booth to get the information if we could possibly get the issue resolved.
We're in categories because you put us on categories, and you said at the last meeting that you would move the categories if necessary, and that's what we're asking right now, so all our employees can get the 5% raise.
I understand that.
I mean, the students that are the lowest on our pay scale are not going to get a 5% raise.
I understand that, but we need information first.
But it's the material.
It's not comment period right now.
I understand that.
I'm sorry.
We have to speak for the people that we're trying to...
We're trying to speak for the people, too.
But the money is there, you gave us the money. We're just asking you to move it so that everybody can...
We will talk about it after they get the information back.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Dr. Warco, get us some information, then we can, then we'll talk.
If you can't get it tonight, I'm ready to have a special meeting so we can resolve it.
We have a special meeting anytime you want.
Let's decide on a special called meeting, one would you like to have?
Okay.
Sometime next week.
Next week.
Monday, Tuesday?
Yeah, hold on.
Well, Tuesday.
I've got to see here.
Tuesday works for me.
All right for everybody, all right for staff?
I can't see.
Tuesday, 5:30?
What day you say, Tom?
Tuesday, 5:30, whatever date that is.
I'm ready to meet.
That's the 18th, I'm correct.
Yep.
All right, Tuesday, 5:30.
And again, just in closing, if you send the questions in advance, we could have had this information to you this evening, so this is very unfortunate.
Well, also, if that information had been included in your motion for the minutes, too, because if we approve a contract, we'd say who to, and for the amount of the contract.
Our minutes haven't been totally published yet, though.
Well, I'm going by what was, what was posted on your Facebook page and everything.
It was a press release.
Well, a press release should include the same things, because if, you know, that's whatever.
All right, let's see if we can carry on then. Thank y'all ladies.
You're welcome.
All right, that's all of the presentations. Lucky, you got the county administrator reports, you got a lot of them.
I do, does, would the board like to go through those items, or do you want to do the public hearings?
Everybody's here for the public hearings now, and it's, what, seven minutes after seven?
Let's take a little party, like, two-minute, two-minute party.
We can take a, we can take a 10-minute recess and come back and start on the public hearings. If that's all right with the board.
The Board of Supervisors already moved, voted on, and approved a school budget, freezing the budget at last year's levels with a 5% increase for teachers. At the same time, three supervisors voted to remove the only oversight of the school board budget and voted for annual appropriations. If the Board of Supervisors chooses to revisit the school board budget by virtue of the latest budget increase request, you must also consider reinstating at a minimum quarterly appropriations and exercise your duty for oversight of the budget. Awarding annual appropriations wasn't just unacceptable, it's reckless. As we just heard, the school board has only reconciled with the county treasurer through May. That's not acceptable. It's not acceptable to any other department, and it should not be acceptable for the school board. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person on the sign-up sheet is Maurice Johnson.
Just saw a little bit of this tonight. So, as repeatedly stated for the last two years, the people of Northumberland County not only seek continuous clarity on county finances, we demand it. On June 1st, close to 400 people were in this building, all of them expressing discontent over the current affairs. During that session, numerous people got up here, talked with insane backgrounds, just awesome people, presenting several justified improvements and approaches for achieving a healthier economic environment. Among them was the ever-present demand for a forensic examination. But forensic examination is merely a piece of the larger required course correction needed. To date, this board has not outwardly shown any movement in the direction of an examination. In fact, by appearances, the school board merely has to ask for additional monies by way of asserting claimed needs with no direct evidence or justification required. This is a case where going with the will of the people is in the best interest of everybody involved, including the school board, hey? The teachers, the bus drivers, the staff, the employees, they're not the problem, they're not. Over the course of intervening weeks since June 1st, the people have been witness to the process of making county budgets more lean. We watched as law enforcement and EMS carved out significant chunks of their budget, putting residents at potential risk. At the same time, we were witness to no such effort on the part of NCPS. In fact, the part that they left out while they were standing here is the greater-than-1% comeback that they're going to ask for. Lacking sources of revenue, common, revenue that's common in most localities, Northumberland County is facing an accelerating rate of decline. At the same time, Northumberland County is home to some of the nation's greatest talents in areas that are necessary in order to grow a decent economy. This point was made very clear on June 1st. The suggestions made by people on June 1st were all valid and necessary parts of a holistic solution. This board would do well to accept those suggestions and demands, supporting them with adoptions of policies that garner support from the huge talent pool that exists here. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Next person on the list to speak is Karen Pika.
Good evening, Karen Pika, Wycomico Church District 4, and I am a PhD type that didn't know what was going on in June, so I have since taken time to study. So I have a 30-year history in budgeting with large amounts. I do have a PhD, I do do statistical analysis, and one of the things that is confusing me, I thank the super... And one of the things that is confusing me, I thank the supervisors first of all for not advancing or transferring any funds tonight with the school board budget, because in the minute those funds are transferred, they become unavailable for something else. I am not opposed to supporting teachers. I am not, I don't hate the school system, I don't hate the teachers, I don't hate the school bus drivers. What I hate is my tax dollars not going for what, or for going for things I don't know. So for example, tonight, what we learned was, the school board thankfully now has an additional $2.3 million that was recouped. I get there's a process for recouping that, but yeah, first have to ask, which is one of the things the auditors found out. The school board, or today, the superintendent said, "We don't need the money for the school lunches to be, the school lunch team to be approved, because we already had that approved." You shouldn't come to a meeting like today's without knowing that. Contracts, contracts are public. I would have happily volunteered to help the school get, recoup some of that money from the federal government. Having been a federal employee for many, many years, understand how those systems work. I know how all those IT systems work, and I know what the process is. I would have done it for free, you wouldn't have had to pay me $85 an hour. One of the things that was raised in the June meeting, and I stand in full support of that based on the comments we heard tonight, based on the discussion that we had about the budget, we need a citizen advisory board. If you had a citizen advisory board, we could have given Dr. Worgo the questions, Dr. Pika would have happily given her the questions that we as citizens would have asked, that I'm assuming are the same ones you would have asked. It would have been a smoother process. We would have the ability to support the supervisors in their various roles. We would also have the ability to support the school board. So I stand in support of the supervisors digging into this, because my tax dollars can only go so far. If you keep raising them, I gotta move. And I would happily volunteer to be the district rep on the citizen advisory board.
All right, thank you ma'am. Our next person on the list is Jim Johnson. Mr. Johnson left just a little bit ago. Our next person is John Woodrum.
I was gonna speak about a conditional use permit.
Sir?
He was gonna speak of a conditional use permit, he signed up in the wrong thing.
I will, I'll take your office in. All right. Next person, looks like it's Dawn Roland. Okay. Next one is Sunshine Hutchison.
She's a dear one, this is.
All right. Howard Hurst? Same, okay. Karen Cridman? Same. Denise Messick?
Good evening.
Good evening.
It was not my intent to come here tonight to say anything. However, Denise Muzik, School Board District 3. I am disappointed. I'm disappointed in this board's behavior to not fund all employees. It is not equitable for us to not grant our maintenance, nurses, bus drivers, technology team a raise. We cannot run the schools with teachers alone. They deserve what they got, but so does the additional support personnel. They have to get the children to school. They clean up and keep the schools clean and healthy. They treat them when they're sick. They run the technology. It's all needed in order for us to have the quality schools that we have. I'm proud of our schools. It is not fair, and we didn't ask for additional money, we asked for a transfer from one category to others. We need to give them a raise. They need the same 5% that everybody else got. You gave yourselves a raise, they deserve a raise. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet, but anyone else like to speak? Please come up.
Yeah, hi, Jim Michelle from down at Lodge Landing. I didn't plan to speak tonight either, but I heard Dr. Worgo say a whole bunch of stuff tonight. A lot of it I agreed with. I agree that some of the things she's requesting are transfers of money from one comp to another. But this Make Work program, to make work is what she said they had to do. They could do this, they could do that, they could be substitute teachers in order to give seven bus drivers full-time, full-time status. You guys gotta look at that separately. The items that they voted on, that you put in at one, at one, as one big thing. If you separate those, I think you can come to agreement with her. But the one about the bus drivers opens a whole new can of worms. If I'm a bus driver getting that money, and the other bus drivers are not getting that benefit, I'm making more money than they are. That's not equitable. The other thing is, the way I understand what she said, 95K, she never said where that was being transferred from one, excuse me, one column to another. She said that they needed 95,000 to give the rest of the employees 5%. But where's that coming from? The other issues, she said where they were coming from. One by one by one, including a Make Work program. But the 95,000, I didn't see where she said that was coming from a particular thing. So I would like you guys to make sure you dig into that. Get that question to her, so that she can answer it at the next one, and we don't run into the same loggerhead BS that we had tonight. Thank you.
All right. Anyone else like to speak tonight? Anyone else like to speak? Anyone over in the other courtroom like to speak tonight? Nobody over, okay. All right, no one else would like to speak here tonight, all right? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak? Anybody more? Anybody in the virtual world like to make a public comment tonight? No one? All right. All right, since we don't have anyone else who wants to speak, I'll close the public comment period. And we will start on our public hearings tonight. Our first hearing tonight would be a request by Stephen W. Jet, owner and Brandon Webb. And Philip, would you take over on that, please?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Stephen W. Jet, owner and Brandon Webb applicant for a conditional use permit to allow a restaurant on property zone A1 agriculture. The property is shown as tax map parcel 27-1-304, and is located at 15531 Northumberland Highway near Burgess.
All right, would you also read the conditions, Steve?
Yes, sir. The suggested conditions, if approved, that all required permits and their licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including but not limited to the Virginia Department of Health and Virginia Department of Transportation. Any proposed lighting shall be non-reflective and directed downward, and any proposed signage shall comply with the zoning order.
All right, is Mr. Jet or Mr. Webb here tonight, would like to make a comment, please? Come on up, please.
Hello, Brandon Webb. I'm basically here to get approval to put a bathroom and picnic tables out on the property, and make it look pretty. And that's it. Nothing more, nothing less. In the future, if I, if I get more customers, then maybe think about buying a building and setting up there. But right now, just a food truck, some picnic tables, and a bathroom, restroom.
Okay, any board members having comments for Mr. Webb for open public hearing?
What kind of bathroom are you talking about?
Well, not really, I don't really like porta potties. So like, maybe like a male and a female bathroom, with hand washing stations, and that's it.
That would be a portable unit, you say? Or non-portable?
I guess it would be, but like, I wanna, I don't wanna have like a regular porta potty, like, it's like a regular restroom. You know, maybe build a regular restroom.
You're gonna be building something there, okay. Any other board members have any questions?
Have you looked into the soils to see if they perk? If you're gonna do a regular.
I haven't really dug too far into it, but I'm pretty sure it wouldn't be a problem.
Don't assume that. Not around this county.
That's a septic field.
I can tell you that personally.
Yep, that's a septic field you have put in also.
But whatever you do, you have to comply with health department.
Right.
Do you have your, the food truck in the house located somewhere else?
Right now, I'm only working on weekends, because I'm gonna cook on the fishing boat. So I opened up on a property last week on Saturday, on Sunday. And Saturday, I was in Comonique, right in front of Tractor Supply. I'm not allowed to be there more than two days without having permission from you guys.
Any board members have, any other board members have any questions? All right, Mr. Webb, thank you, we'll open the public hearing, and then we'll come back to you. All right, I'll open the public hearing on this. Our first person on the sign-up sheet is Dawn Roland.
Hello.
Hello.
I just wanted to say that I thought that having another food option in the Burgess area was a good idea. I have not personally had his cuisine, but some friends have, and I support his progress in expanding to have tables and a restroom. So, wanted to let y'all know that I'm in favor.
All right, thank you ma'am.
Thank you.
Next person is Susan Carroll.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. And I have actually already eaten his food, which is delicious. And I'd like to see that we continue having some of his food. And we don't have a lot down here, so to have that would really be a good idea. And I support him in any way.
All right.
Good idea. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Webb, I see you signed up on this sheet too. That's all right, Mr. Webb, that is all right.
You signed up on right one anyway.
Yep, that's right, got on the right one. All right, I don't have anybody else on the sign-up sheet right now, would anyone else like to comment? Anyone else like to comment? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to comment on Mr. Brandon Webb's request? Anyone else in the virtual world like to comment? No one? All right, since we don't, excuse me, since we don't have anyone else to speak, I'll close the public hearing and it matters before the board. I'm older than we are, right there, request.
A second.
All right, got a motion, a second, any other discussion?
No, I'd just like to add the language that the motion is made in due consideration public health and safety, general welfare, the community, public necessity, convenience, and the exercise of good zoning practice pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
Yes. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Tom.
And I'd like to commend Mr. Webb for coming ahead and getting your request and doing it in a proper way without, setting it up an operation and then coming after the fact. You did it very well.
Yes.
And I hope you land perks, so you don't have to spend a lot of money. With the condition, what's that?
With the condition.
Yeah, with the condition.
All right.
Mr. Long, is he?
Mr. Long made the motion.
Mr. Brand seconded.
And.
I read the legal verbiage.
All right. We got a motion, a second, do we have any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Mr. Webb, your motion passes. Good luck, sir.
Good luck. That'll be the only happy feeling we got tonight.
All right. And next on the list would be a request by Andrea Corey for a conditional use permit. Philip, would you take care of that, please?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Andrea Corey, owner, for a conditional use permit to allow a vacation home rental on property zone R3 residential restricted. Property is shown as tax map parcel 38Z31-15, and is located at 134 Beach Road in Chesapeake Beach subdivision.
All right, Ms. Carey, Corey, are you here? Come on up, please, ma'am.
Hi.
Hi. You have any questions for the board, any comments of what you want to do?
I've been doing short-term rentals for almost three years now. This is the first time I've gone in front of a board to do this. I bought in Northumberland County, because I had strong property rights in my neighborhood. My deed had access, I called the county prior to buying. I cleared everything. I'm a five-star super host, there were 100 views. I'm a mom of two, I've spent the last six out of eight weeks, not weekends, at my home. So I occasionally rent it out, it's not a full-time rental. And I've never had a complaint directed at me from one of my neighbors. They might direct them to you, but nobody's ever spoken to me. And if there was an issue, I would, I run a communications firm. I would resolve that with my neighbors. So if there's an issue for a voluntary civic association, which I don't have to be a part of, I don't see how they have an impact on what I'm doing in my home, because a lot of the other homes in the neighborhood probably need more assistance than what I'm operating. For oversight.
All right. Any board members have any questions?
When you rent this home, what do you tell the renters, or whatever you wanna call it, vacation? What do you specifically tell them they can do and can't do?
I have a beach on my house, so I'm beachfront, so they cannot use a community beach, but they can use my property.
And how many people do you normally rent? Two at a time?
Up to seven, I sleep. I'm a three-bedroom home, so it's three bedrooms, two baths, and up to seven, but that's tight, so, even with my own family. And we allow up to three cars for parking. And I operate STRs in Irvington, and they have guidelines, like this many bedrooms is this many people, and this many parking spots, and no fires before four o'clock, and there's no fireplaces can be actively used. So as long as you guys give me some rules, I'm happy to follow them. Or run wild.
So you have your own beach property, so you do not need to go to a public beach area, in fact? Okay. All right. Any other board members have any questions?
What kind of conditions does Irvington place on you?
I, something like what I just told you about reporting to them, reporting the taxes. Right now, Airbnb reports the taxes directly for me, and VRBO, but they ask for once a month, like a fillable sheet that we send in. But it's just rules about basically health and safety for guests. Cleanliness is one of them. I send them to your county attorney, just to review as a recommendation, maybe to set something similar.
When you lease it out, rented it, whatever word you wanna properly use, do you, is there a local manager or someone on, in the Irvington area that is a point of contact?
Well, for the Irvington, it's me, but I have a property management service, so.
Do they have a list of the people's names that are specifically using that property per visit?
It's required by Airbnb.
Okay.
Yeah. And background checks, you have to be over 25, no parties, quiet time at 10 o'clock at night, all those rules that are pretty standard. You have to have a government-issued ID with a background check in order to rent an Airbnb.
And how, what kind of check do they do?
It's an Airbnb, I don't do the check myself, yeah. I have long-term rentals, where I do the background checks, and felonies, and those kind of things.
And we're looking at short-term, ma'am?
Yeah.
All right. Any other board members have any comments, questions right now?
None.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
Sure.
Mr. Marston, would you mind read those conditions before I open the public hearing, please?
Yes, sir. The suggested conditions, if approved, that all required permits and their licenses shall be obtained from all appropriate regulatory agencies, including compliance with all applicable state, federal, and local laws, regulations, ordinances, or rules concerning taxes, including transient occupancy tax. A smoke detector and a carbon monoxide detector shall be located in each bedroom and in any other location required by the building code. There shall be at least one off-street parking space for each bedroom and no on-street parking. The vacation home rental shall have an access driveway to a state highway with a sufficient 12-foot width, 12-foot height, and condition to accommodate emergency services, vehicles, and equipment. The vacation home rental shall register and maintain registration with the county's registry if such ordinance is enacted by the board supervisors. Vacation home rental shall register a local manager who possesses the authority and ability to promptly address and correct any violations of the conditions, use requirements, and/or limitations applicable to the vacation home rental with the building and zoning office and the sheriff's office. This registry shall include the name, address, and telephone number of the local manager, and this shall also be posted in a conspicuous area of the vacation home rental. The vacation home rental's boundary line shall be clearly marked and identified for the occupants of the rental home. An inspection of the vacation home rental shall be conducted annually by the building official or designee and shall be paid by the owner pursuant to the county's adopted fee schedule. Recreational vehicles may be parked on the property but may not be used by guests for living quarters during their stay at the vacation home rental. Renters' pets shall be kept under control at all times. Overnight occupancy shall be limited to two persons per bedroom plus two additional persons per residence. And this conditional use permit is non-transferable and does not attach to the property if ownership changes.
All right, thank you, Mr. Marston. All right. Any board members have any other questions now before I open the public hearing? All right, I'll open the public hearing. First person on the sign-up sheet is Cheryl Johnson.
Cheryl Johnson, Reedville, Virginia. Why, why are we going through this again? In 2013, yes, 10 years ago, we brought in Superman. Remember Superman? He was about seven foot tall, attorney in Fairfax. I know you all remember him. Tonight, the board will hear requests for conditional use permits on vacation home rentals. Years ago, we were faced with the realities of potential inverse condemnation lawsuits where instead of collecting taxes from the owners, the county would end up paying them heavily. All these applicants should expect approval. If the conditions of the counties, if the conditions that the county sets are made, approval should follow. Historically, this has not been the case. Applicants came before you and were verbally attacked through the process. You remember that? Many of you on the board may recall this rodeo, and we hope to see that these applications are respected with wisdom and your hindsight. And anybody who needs the attorney's name, I have it personal. And emails. Thank you.
Thank you. Next person on the sign-up sheet is Charlotte Pence.
Hello, Charlotte Pence, Chesapeake Beach Estates. I would like to request that anyone who speaks be from R3 and not in general Northumberland. I didn't pack my toothbrush tonight, so I really don't wanna sleep here. And then also, we've been very respectful. The group has come to talk to both the planning commission and the board of supervisors for a year and a half, quite honestly. So I just wanted to state that. And also, do we speak on each one, or can I just talk about each?
If your comments are gonna be the same on each one, we'll just take one comment.
All righty. Siri, hey Siri. Set a timer for four minutes. Thank you for providing a public hearing and allowing us to voice our thoughts. Since last year, we have consistently expressed our concerns regarding some of the issues we have had in Chesapeake Beach Estates by renters of short-term rentals as well as the owners of these businesses. I don't wanna waste your time by repeating what has already been stated many times, but I do want to express to once again, thank you for establishing that a cup be required in order to run a vacation home rental within the R3 district and to communicate that since the May 11th Board of Supervisors meeting, the short-term rental owners have continued to advertise and rent their homes without a cup. I also like to commend Mr. Webb for doing things the right way. Mr. Sloop has continued to advertise and rent his two homes every day, to include today. Renters from Massachusetts, his two homes are currently booked months ahead and advertises on several platforms. His renters have trespass, sped, don't follow rules. Ms. McMillan continues to advertise on TripAdvisor and Verbo. She stated on her application for a cup that her home is a family home and a short-term rental when not occupied by owners. And I believe at the bottom of that application that you're signing that everything is true when you sign that. I feel like that's a slick way to state that she can't book her home for renters sometimes when her family comes here. We have had the most difficulty from her renters for the past year and a half. She's introduced three different people as her mother. Mr. Forster has continued to rent, and recently when his renters were made aware of our bylaws and that they would need to be in the presence of property owner when using the beach, they said they were renting and on vacation and were not gonna leave the beach. Then a police officer was called who was shown our bylaws and he politely communicated to them they were trespassing. They were upset because Mr. Forster did not make them aware that they could not only use, that they could only use his property and could not use property of others. He then immediately removed his property from Verbo, my guess is to avoid a bad review, but continued to rent the very next day for a week, July, June 25th week in June, July 2nd through the 9th. He's still advertising on TripAdvisor. Ms. Corey still advertises her home on Verbo, Airbnb, TripAdvisor, and promotes direct booking. She stated on her application for a cup that she only rents off-season. I have documentation where she previously and currently advertises a minimum night stay during peak season. She has no beach, so she sends everybody over to the private beach. She just has water. And I've seen more than three cars park there, and they parked on their neighbor's lot right beside her. I've seen up to seven cars there. My point is that their actions prove, once again, that they do not care and will continue to work around any system to make money without any concerns that their actions have changed the dynamics of our residential neighborhood. If an ordinance is established, what is the benefit if they are not regulated? What are the consequences of their actions to ignore the ordinance? If I were to trespass on their property, would I be held accountable? Regarding this, oh, a minute. I'm asking that you please consider every conversation that has helped us arrive to a vacation home rental requiring a cup, and I request that each of the cup applications submitted within Chesapeake Beach Estates not be approved. Please help us return to a safe and comfortable neighborhood where many of us live full-time. It is our home. We want to feel safe. Thank you for your time and consideration.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, next person on the sign-up sheet is Winnie Dunn.
Hi, I'm Catherine Dunn or Winnie Dunn, and I own the house at 1 Terrace Street in Chesapeake Beach, and I did not come prepared to speak tonight. However, I have some notes. It's not gonna be as eloquent as Cheryl's was. I have, my house is almost in that picture right there, and it's on the waterfront in a little inlet behind that little point of land. And it includes a small, private beach adjacent to the community golf cart bridge. When I purchased the house 20 years ago, I did so in part because of the safety in that small community and the neighbors that were in that small community that I met when I was looking at the house. They were very nice. They look out for each other. Everybody knew everybody. We all recognized everybody's faces and knew, you would wave to everybody and offer to help if you could. In the past year, my, the dynamics of the neighborhood have changed. I've noticed drastically. There are no longer people that I know out there. People are, and I don't know exactly who it is because I'm not there. I work in Richmond during the week. However, I can tell you that I am right next to the golf cart bridge. There is a lot of traffic by my house constantly. And people have stopped and they feel, feel the need to go out on this private little beach that we have and make it their own private little beach. And when I'm there, I chase them off most of the time. And when I'm not there, they have, like just last weekend, somebody had a bonfire on that beach, which is very, very close to our house. And with the wind coming off of the bay, there's a huge fire potential in that little area. And I'm, and I know because our neighbor's house caught on fire a few years ago that it's not gonna survive. The houses on that little point are not gonna survive if there's a fire. I've also noticed that my shower, my outside shower has been used and the water was not completely turned off, and that the grill on our deck had been used and had not, like, the cover was off and it was on when I left. And the gas was left on. And I don't know who is going up there and making this their home, but that is not okay with me. I can't see what's going on when I'm not there. But this has happened all in the last year since the neighborhood has changed and the people don't know or respect each other's property as much as they used to. And most of it's because of the constant influx of new faces. The, the, um... The other thing I wanted to say is that, I'm not saying it's, well, I don't know who it is, but the renters that I see do not respect other people's property. They don't respect the, the noise ordinance that we have in the community. People are out shooting fireworks on the beach at 2:00 in the morning on the weekends. And I live right there on the beach, nearly, like right across from it. And it keeps me up at night, and that's not fair when I'm trying to get away from everything and be quiet and have a peaceful little place. They also don't respect the...
30 seconds.
They also don't respect the children in our, in our neighborhood, the speed limits in the neighborhood. And for this reason, I strongly request that none of these conditional permits be ruled. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next person is Arnold Day.
Hi, Arnold Day. I'm here with my wife, Susan. We're residents at 105 Virginia Road. Been there 21 years. We have always loved this family-oriented neighborhood, and the fact that most everyone in the hood, as we call it, knows most everyone else. We have watched our grandkids grow up here and a couple dozen more young folks. It is very much like a family. The hood has always been a place where kids could roam around freely without fear of stranger danger. This, again, is because it's a private neighborhood and we all know each other. Now with the influx of STRs, we have no idea who these strangers are. Sometimes they show up six, eight, or more people strong. Our very small beach is a big draw for the owners of these properties, and it's not fair that the amenities that we've worked so hard on, that we built and funded ourselves, are, as members of the community through donations and volunteer work, are now available to be exploited via the internet for anyone who wishes to rent them. With the controversy now involving the STRs, I've attended meetings with shouting matches, very heated interactions with people in tears, near physical altercations. We feel very strongly about our hood. The Chesapeake Beach Owners Covenant has always stated that all visitors must be accompanied by a property owner. The two entrances have always stated that a private, that it is a private community as well as the beach being protected similarly. Since the county ruled that the R3 zoning requires a CUP in order to rent a short-term basis, owners have continued to rent their properties unaffected in direct violation of our covenants as well as the county's ruling. Not only do they continue to rent, but they tell the renters to disregard our posted signs. Treat it as your own. We've had to ask people to leave the beach. We've even had to involve the sheriff's department. We had an owner, as a matter of fact, just two weeks ago, asked someone that was on her private property to leave, and they refused. Good thing I wasn't there. This is not a very good way to conduct a business. If these new owners are, you know, already acting so irresponsible as to violate openly the county's decision, then I think we can all see as residents why we don't want STRs. We should not have to police our own property, potentially ruin someone's vacation, nor should we be put at the risk involved not knowing who we're approaching or what may happen. These people don't respect our property. They drive too fast. They roll through stop signs. We have children on bikes, golf carts, pedestrians, pets, walk in the streets. And in renter fashion, these people leave. They don't look back. They leave trash. They do damage, and it's us as residents to deal with it. I wish to reiterate the fact that our community is private, and that's exactly why most of us are there. We really don't want or need STRs in our neighborhood now or in the future. The lack of regards for the rules of our covenant as well as the county's ruling show total disrespect at all levels. These people don't care about our community. They only wish to exploit our little beach and pad their pockets off of the hard work and determination of the residents of Chesapeake Beach. We don't want STRs. Thank you. Thank you.
Next person on the sign-up sheet is Catherine Swan. Swan?
I'm Catherine Swan. I live at 2 Terrace in Chesapeake Beach in the summertime. And we are not very far from two of these residences. But what I really want to do with you is have you look at the setup of Chesapeake Beach. It had, the lots have been cut out as a trailer park. There are a lot of trail, the, my point is the lots are not very big, and some of the houses have alleyways between them. My house is an alleyway away from the house next to me. A number of these houses are built that way. And when we have people outside coming in and celebrating whatever they're celebrating and doing it at our expense at all hours of the night, it is not like even coming into Heathville. I looked to see if I could find one pair of houses that had an alleyway between them. And it doesn't exist in the, in the 360 ride through Heathville the way the houses in Chesapeake Beach are put together. Summertime windows are open, sound carries. It is difficult to sleep at night, and I happen to be a priest. And on Saturday nights, it's extremely difficult for me when I have to get up early the next morning to go to work. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Next person is David Rose.
Hi, my name is David Rose. Chesapeake Beach Estates, 23 Chesapeake Beach Road. I respectfully request that all five applications for conditional use permits located in Chesapeake Beach Estates be denied. I do not feel choosing out-of-town investors' profits in 0.12% of our county over longtime homeowners' quality of life is the right choice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. All right, next person is Chris Burnett.
I've signed up on all the sheets, but I'm just going to make one blanket statement so we don't have to hear the same thing five times. So I have a residence at 147 Virginia Road in Chesapeake Beach Estates. I am against approving the conditional use permits for all of the applicants that are within the Chesapeake Beach Estates R3 neighborhood. The STRs have continued to operate as usual even after the approval requiring the cup. Even if the application of the STRs is disapproved, I'm pretty sure that they're still going to operate business as usual under the table, as proven by some of their ads on the travel sites where message me directly for the best rates, and going to be cash under the table to try to get around not having to use conditional use permits. At a previous board meeting, some of the operators stated that they came to the area, fell in love with the area, fell in love with the charm, and that's why they chose to buy property in this area. That's the reason why we came down and bought property in Chesapeake Beach. We had a lot of friends there, we knew a lot of people there, fell in love with the charm, fell in love with the atmosphere here, and some of these operators that stated that, we have yet to see them, only a few of them, yet to see them in our neighborhood, they don't participate in any of our fundraisers or our community events, we solely raise funds to maintain our roads, maintain our beaches, maintain our community clubhouse, the footbridge, some of the other, the boat ramps. We never see them participate, they never sign up to volunteer. We did have one make a donation with some strings attached to it earlier this year. I think two of the STRs are members of our civic club, but the other ones are not. These amenities that they advertise on their sites, all the amenities that over the past 40-plus years before we came, before they came, that all the residents volunteered, worked so hard to build, and they're taking advantage of that and exploiting that work by making money off of the backs of the people that have come before them. This year, we have to repair two of our jetties, it's very expensive as part of our extensive fundraising operations that we do for years during the course of the year. As stated, and a couple other people have stated, we did have an incident with one of the STR renters coming down, using our private beach, we asked them politely to leave, they did not leave, we had to involve the sheriff's department, which we showed him our bylaws, which I believe y'all have a copy of that is registered with the county. So they were asked to leave, we don't want to get the sheriff's department involved in something as frivolous as this, but they continue to disregard our bylaws and our covenants that we have set in place. I'm now fearing if we approve these applications for these R3 districts, that'll open the door for other investors to come in who have no regard...
Thirty seconds.
Who have no regard for the community or the area, all they're worried about is making money. We just want to preserve our little slice of paradise that we have, we welcome families to come and participate and buy property to bring their families, raise their children, and enjoy the beauty that we have here in Northumberland County. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Next person is Kimberly. You have to help me, ma'am?
Seswick.
Seswick, okay. I'm sorry.
What's wrong with you? Can't you pronounce that?
What was that, Tommy?
Can't you pronounce that?
Thank you for letting me speak this evening. My name is Kimberly Seswick, and I live with my husband at 26 Jacob's Drive in Chesapeake Beach Estates. We purchased last September, and in that short amount of time, we've been fully engaged with the community. And I'm just going to kind of repeat what's already been said, is that we as neighbors take care of Chesapeake Beach Estates. My husband and I were out in April cleaning the beach and making sure it was all set for the coming season for the neighbors. We have done some work with the Save the Beach Day fundraising and the next day with cleanup. And also, I've noticed in just the short amount of time that we've been here, with the few times we've been down at the beach, which is usually to walk the dog, and then in our short experience, two vehicles, two SUVs filled with family members of people who are renting just outside Chesapeake Beach Estates, were there to use the beach and wanted to know where to park their cars. As this was happening, neighbors of ours were mowing the lawns around all of the, what we call the hill, where the picnic tables are there at the beach. That's who cares for this site. This is neighbors taking care of the common community property for neighbors. So I talked to these people who had shown up, explained that they could go to Vermar Beach, which is larger, and you all know that that is not a very large beach, it is larger than what's at Chesapeake Beach Estates. So if we open the doors to everyone, we can't keep up with the maintenance. We're doing this physically ourselves, we don't have the money to be able to purchase a contract with somebody to come and care for the property, it's us taking care of it. So I rest with what I have to say, but say that from my opinion, for all these five cups, that we deny that, just because of what I have seen in just a short amount of time, that those bylaws have not been followed, that yes, sheriff's department had to be contacted to explain to people who were there that they had to leave. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Next person is Duncan Pence.
Good evening, my name is Duncan Pence, I live at 81 Jacob's Drive in Chesapeake Beach Estates. As you've often heard, Chesapeake Beach is a family-oriented neighborhood, we work hard to maintain our roads, our jetty walls, and the beach, that comes from all the money that the community has put in. We are not against all short-term rentals, we only feel that there should be appropriate considerations of where they are allowed to establish their businesses. As you know, we're a high-density neighborhood, we're very close together, so I think it puts excess, creates excessive issues in our neighborhood because of that. We have had many problems, as you all know, in the last two years, because you've heard them at the planning commission and at these meetings, that is both verbally and through emails that have been sent in. These problems will not go away, in fact, they are still, of course, these short-term rentals or renters are still renting these properties without a cup. You know, the last meeting, a lot of them came in here and talked about the money, the money they were making or the money they were putting towards the community. It's all about the money, we can all see it's all about the money, how much money can I make? Do they really care about the neighborhood? They don't. I don't think, that's my opinion. I would like to know what the consequences would be if someone didn't get a cup, what the consequences would be from the board, if someone did not get approved and they continue to operate their business there. I don't know whether that's something y'all can comment on or not. Excuse me? Okay, okay, thank you. I'm asking, of course, and I'm speaking for the ones in Chesapeake Beach Estates, I'm asking that you not approve any of these applicants submitted for the public hearing this evening because of the high density and small lot sizes within Chesapeake Beach. Please consider that there are better places for short-term rental than our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
All right, next person is Lorraine Fries.
I would like to defer my comments to a neighbor who drove from West Virginia to one of the short-term rentals on Ms. Corey's.
Yes, ma'am?
If that's okay.
Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, ma'am.
My name is Debbie Holdaway Summerfield, I am the daughter of the owners of 122 Beach Road, which is the adjoining property to 134 Beach Road, which has filed for an application for a cup to run a short-term rental. I'm here tonight to speak to a place that holds 50 years of memories for me, a place I came as a child and now a place where I bring my children, a place I've always felt safe and would like to continue to feel. I would like to address my concern regarding short-term rentals in our community. Five properties made application for conditional use permits. While the whole community is important to me, I will focus on the two that are in close proximity to my property. The property at 134 Beach Road is the adjoining property to ours. The adjoining parcel, known as Lot 14, was subdivided into equal halves some years ago. There are no easements listed on the deed. However, 134 Beach Road uses our property for ingress and egress each time a vehicle enters or exits or turns around in the yard they encroach on our property. The property at 134 Beach Road is still listed for rent for the weeks of September 4th through the 9th, and was rented out over the 4th of July, that was as of 8:00 AM this morning, it was available from September 4th through the 9th. In the rental ad on the Airbnb site, the photos depicting the property at 134 Beach Road were taken from our property, making the yard of 134 Beach Road look larger, clearly not knowing or adhering to the property lines. The application made for the said permit was incomplete as to parking spaces and stated off-peak times for rentals. Additionally, the property at 134 Beach Road overlooks our community beach with the unknown amount of background checking and offering self-check-in, I don't feel confident these are the type of practices that will keep the citizens and children of our community safe. For these reasons, I believe the parcel at 134 Beach Road is not a good candidate for the allowance of short-term rentals. Secondly, the property at 117 Beach Road is across the street from us, this property has no beachfront of its own. In the past, people who have stayed at the property came into our yard to take pictures, they were asked to leave. My concern for a permit at 117 Beach Road would be the allure of the beachfront properties, therefore not only creating a trespassing issue, but also a liability of possible injury. It should be noted that our community beach is for owners and their accompanied guests, further noting there could be an increase in calls to law enforcement to protect the rights of our community. It is my prayer that the board will not allow this exception for non-conforming use. The passion of the people who are long into their ownership, that have nurtured the growth, literally weathered the storms together and become a part of what gives Chesapeake Beach Estates its charm and nostalgia, please...
Thirty seconds.
Please protect the peace and safety we as a community feel, as we have protected the integrity of our private beach for decades. Thank you for hearing us all.
All right, I don't have anyone else on the sign-up sheet, would anyone else like to speak?
I've listened quite a bit, a lot of stories. These folks would have you believe that if you go on a vacation, you're a bad person. I don't believe that everybody that visits is bad. I don't believe that the frequency of bad behavior is as it is, but as I've always said, contracts are a thing, they're enforceable, contracts can be modified such that human behavior can be controlled. These people are renting their properties out now, taking it away from them is going to cause a great deal of legal problems. That said, in my previous comment, I mentioned that the economic situation in this county is deteriorating. If we're going to be able to tax businesses, it's not a good idea to try and shut them out. Seriously, we've got an economic development issue, and we're going to sit there and close off businesses that are making taxable money because somebody, several somebodies, and I've offered my assistance on this thing, I'm kind of done with that, but several somebodies have decided that other people that go on vacation in their world don't behave, but I'd be willing to bet that they go on vacation too. So a rational man would say, yeah, there might be a risk, but the permits provide the vehicle for recourse. You get a permit, you violate it, eventually that permit's going to be pulled, and if there's other issues that go along with that, there's an occupancy permit that could get pulled. There is recourse, it's not like somebody's flapping in the breeze, waiting for something to go wrong, and then pouncing. It doesn't work that way. These people have the right to do what they're doing with their properties. Now, if there's bad relations, and I can tell you as one of the renters that's been successful at it for 10 years, and I even had my own hurdles to begin with, it can be done amicably, it can be done symbiotically, there's no reason to let that guy that's been destroying our economy for a long time, his name's Nimby, you might know him, and that's one of the biggest reasons that this county doesn't have the businesses that it needs in order to get away from 95% of income revenues being from real estate property taxes. We need other tax sources, this is it. I would implore all of the property owners to engage with their neighbors again, and I would also recommend that the neighbors try to be a little bit more amicable so that they can all come to an operational agreement, but taking away property rights, especially under a cup, when you've got the conditions that are already presented, conditions must be adhered to. You violate them, there's consequences. So that's my comment for all five of them, and in fact, I would recommend that this board approve all of them in one fell swoop, since I'm sure that the conditions are the same, are they not, Mr. Martin? Pretty much. So that's kind of like a contract with the county, and then there's contracts with the renters, some of them may currently be weak, they can be adjusted, we know how to make that happen. Don't take away property rights. And encourage businesses that can provide tax income.
Thirty seconds.
I'm done.
You're done.
Thank you.
All right, anyone else like to speak?
No, excuse me, I didn't catch his name or where he was from, I don't believe he's from either community. But this is on the... I'm sorry, what was your name and what community is in?
You don't have a county in and of yourself, this is an industry that I have...
You don't live in the neighborhood we live in, right?
Ladies, ladies, gentlemen, hold on, hold on, his name is Maurice Johnson.
Okay, thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Good evening, my name's Lisa Byerly, I signed up for the Martin Lane Properties, but I'll go ahead and speak now, I don't know when you're going to vote on these, so my comments kind of relate to all of them. I did want to add that I have rented Airbnb and Verbo properties in other communities, and nobody has ever done a background check on me. I'm speaking on behalf, sorry, 84 Martin Lane in Chesapeake Beach Estates. I'm speaking on behalf of my family who are landowners of three dwellings all on Martin Lane in Chesapeake Beach Estates. We've been part of this community for... We've been part of this community for over 60 years. We are opposed to allowing short-term rentals in this golf cart community. We now have two houses at the end of Martin Lane that were purchased for the sole purpose of being short-term rentals. The road in and out of the two short-term rentals is a narrow road with a sharp curve and dead ends at 112 Martin Lane. Road use on this gravel road has increased exponentially with renters' arrivals and departures, as well as cleaning and trash in and out after each renter. There are times where there are multiple cars during a rental period increasing the traffic even more. On top of that, it would be extremely difficult for emergency vehicles to enter and exit those rental properties. We have also seen renters going too fast for the kind of road Martin Lane is, and we have many children in our families causing safety concerns for them. Bringing tourists into a residential area with single-family zoning hurts our quality of life and could change the dynamic of the community, as you've heard many others say. They don't necessarily know the community rules, and there are no consequences for them not adhering. For example, allowing dogs to run without leashes, which we see all the time. We have seen the number of renters in the house at 112 Martin Lane over the posted limit of the Airbnb site twice. That's just the ones that we've noticed. On July 4th, 2021, renters of one of those instances set off illegal fireworks on the point. If the woods near that house caught on fire, it would be difficult to contain the fire, and our properties and homes would surely be affected because there's woods surrounding the whole area. Short-term renters are not bound to common decency. Our property ends with the beach to the water line. One of the two Airbnb properties on Martin Lane meets the beach property. However, on several occasions, we've had to politely ask renters to allow a space on our beach. This has most certainly not been met with the politeness we showed them with one winter cursing out my cousin's wife after she kindly approached them about sharing the beach space with her family. One family, two weekends ago, started to unstack our chairs at the end of the day where we had stacked them to use them for themselves. We are also concerned that the owner purchasing these houses for the sole purpose of income is going to artificially inflate the surrounding property values, thus increasing our assessment in tax bills. Though I have spoken about the issue with the two houses on Martin Lane just now, we are opposed to all short-term rentals in Chesapeake Beach Estates for many of the same reasons. Our properties have been in the family for decades. My family and I have grown up enjoying our time on Chesapeake Bay.
Thirty seconds.
And our children are now trying to do the same, but problems renters have caused are making this very difficult. I ask you to consider how you would feel if you were living next door to this. We believe the owners in this development should have a say in this process. Not yet, not everyone in the community received the letter. Thank you.
Thank you.[799.48][799.48](APPLAUSE) All right, next.
Thank you, my name's Christopher Hutchgo, 59 Davis. In response to the last gentleman who spoke here, I'm a retired Marine. I respect my time in hell. I don't have to spend it in retirement hell on that with STRs. In reviewing your suggested conditions with CUP requirements, you failed to state the specifics regarding the required distance bindings between STRs and landowners adjacent to the STRs. Lots in Chesapeake Beach Estates are 40 by 100. There should be at least 50 feet or more between the STRs and adjacent homeowners for a quiet safe space, as well for privacy and noise, et cetera. Also, there's no mention of the requirement for STRs owners to inform renters what facilities are off-limits to the renters of the STRs. We at Chesapeake Beach Estates already had a verbal altercation on our small beach where the police had to be called for the STRs renters trespassing on our beach. This issue is a primary point of contention regarding STRs in our communities and needs to be addressed in the CUP permits on that. Seems this is a problem, policy's been stated over and over again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[887.73][887.73](APPLAUSE)
All right, Paul Point, I live at 167 Davis Drive. I was on a different paper, but I'm going to speak for all of them also. I've sat and listened, and I've read in the paper all these complaints and whatnot, and I've had my job for 23 years also with Chesapeake Beach. I haven't lived there all the time, but I'm full-time now. The short-term rentals, I mean, I've met a lot of them. I haven't seen a problem with them. I haven't run into a situation a lot of these people complain about. I have seen a lot of problems with just the weekenders that come down and have no consideration for the people that live there. Golf carts flying up and down the street all night, fireworks, Tomo fireworks. The club the other night on 4th of July shot fireworks off at the clubhouse in the middle of the woods. You're talking about burning a house down, I mean, you guys are nuts. Yeah, oh, that's very true, very true. But anyways, it's a lot of, to me, a lot of bullying by the sugar club, which makes their own rules. They don't notify all the landowners when they make changes. It's just a bunch of bull, it's a bunch of kids stuck back and forth. There's no rights to these people's property. They should be able to do what they want to do. I think you should allow it, they're not hurting anybody. It's just a lot of disgruntled people that just don't like what's going on. That's all I got to say.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Brian Talbot. I do not live in Chesapeake Beach. I live in Ophelia, and we have short-term rentals next to us in our house. Two of the homes have turned to investors, like we've seen tonight, and they came across, we love the area, we love the peaceful, the country, the quietness, wrote nice letters because there was multiple offers on the houses, and then what did they do? Turned them into short-term rentals. We have much more space than these poor people do here tonight at our house. Both of the houses are listed at 10 people. Over the 4th of July weekend, there was 12 children and eight adults in the house next door to us that was listed for 10. I feel for these people. I feel for myself. We are in the same boat as these people are. We no longer enjoy our weekends. Now, they're rented through the summer, every day. You never know who's coming in. They come in in the middle of the night, can't read the addresses, pull in our driveway with the high beams on, honk the horns, make lots of noise, unloading, shoot fireworks off all night, party all night. The regulations say no gatherings, no parties. These people don't care. Their dogs, they also say no pets in their listings. Their pets come over there and bark. I was on my porch, and this dog aggressively attacked my porch. This is because of these tourists renting short-term rentals. Now, I haven't called the sheriff here like these good people have had to do. I don't want to bother the sheriff with problems that we have because of these short-term rentals. Him and his deputies have more important things to do. It is your job, however, gentlemen, to stop short-term rentals in North Umland County. I don't care whether they're 40-foot lots or multiple-acre lots. This is ridiculous. We all moved here for peace and quiet, and we do not have it because of investors taking advantage of the county. If you need revenue sources, there are other ways to get them other than short-term rentals. I beg you, please deny all short-term rentals in North Umland County. Thank you.[1132.21][1132.21](APPLAUSE)
Hello, Joseph Young, 30 Clifton Street in Chesapeake Beach Estates. I put my name on another list, but I'm going to speak to all of them. I would wish that y'all would deny the short-term rentals. I've been coming down here for over 40 years at Chesapeake Beach Estates with my grandparents, my parents. When I was a kid, we could ride bikes, we could walk. Only thing we couldn't do was go on a hard surface road, which is where the cars are. Now, I won't let my kids barely outside my yard. Over the 4th of July week, we had golf carts cutting through. I live on a corner, cutting through the corners, doing donuts in my side yard, shooting fireworks off as they pass by. You holler at them, tell them to slow down, they give you the number-one finger, which is not this one. They cuss at you, they don't care what kids are around. You go to the beach, they're constantly cussing on the beach. They leave beer cans, they leave their floats behind, they buy, I guess, chairs at Goodwill, they leave those behind. I picked up beer cans all out of my yard. You know, I have an 11-year-old and an 8-year-old, and I can't even let them walk down the street. It's ridiculous. So I wish that y'all would not allow short-term rentals in that area. I've been coming down here for, like I said, over 40 years. We're the ones that put forth the money to the streets. When they come through, cutting up the rocks and tossing them all into my yard, we got to go pay Lester to come out for more gravel. Just past weekend, one of the rental golf carts come flying through with a young man on the roof of it. I told him to get down. He just laughed at me, and on they went. They go over the footbridge, and they jump it. They see how high they can go. We've repaired it numerous times, but the rental people aren't donating money for us to fix these things. They haven't been around for the last 40 years. I've seen that beach dwindle from the size of half this room to what it is now, and it's only from the people in the community is how we've gotten what we've got. And it's a daggone shame to see it in ripped apart by rentals who come down here, they don't even care. The footbridge is only barely wide enough for a golf cart. They come barreling down that road in cars, SUVs, pickup trucks, attempting to go over it. Some of them make it to it, they ignore the dead-end signs or golf cart crossing signs, ignore all that. And, you know, I used to be able to honestly leave my house here, go back to Richmond, work a full week, and not worry about my place. Now, we've installed cameras. I mean, I worry about what's going on in my place when I'm out there. We have door locks on it, there's a lot of senior citizens in the neighborhood. Some of them are singles, older women, older men, what have you, and it's getting bad. So, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.[1296.01][1296.01](APPLAUSE) All right, anyone else like to speak? Come on upstairs.
I'm Bill Harrison, 139 Lane Road in Chesapeake Beach Estates. I'd like to say, sir, I agree with you 100%. Everybody wants a vacation. But, as one lady spoke, that had talked about the houses on Martin Lane, you know, when they leave and you see the trash and the cans, you know, that, because not everybody takes care of a rental property like you would take care of your own. But what I really wanted to address was when you referred to a house burning down a few years ago, one of the main problems was the cell phone coverage was horrible. I had to run a young lady out to almost the hard surface road to get a signal, to call the 911. We had six fire trucks coming there, barely, well, they couldn't, you know, they got here, one, two, three, you know, and the house is down here because the road is only, I don't think the road's 12-foot wide, and it's not a state-maintained road. It's a public road, gravel road. Two cars have a hard time anywhere in that neighborhood passing each other. A car, a truck, and a golf cart can pass, but it's not a state-maintained road, and it's just gravel, and I don't think rescue vehicles can get back there and take care of everything. So I would say deny these requests. Thank you.
All right, thank you.[1400.57][1400.57](APPLAUSE) All right, would anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak? If you want to speak, come on up to the microphone, sir.
Sir, I have a question for the, I believe, for the county attorney, if he could clarify something on what you stated as far as the Airbnb's requirements or stipulations for a car being able to park in front of the residence of an STR. Could you clarify that, please, sir? Yes, ma'am.
I'm actually, I'm actually the zoning administrator.
Okay.
One of the suggested conditions, if approved, are that there should be at least one off-street parking space per each bedroom and no on-street parking.
Okay, with that said, sir, most of these STRs have at least two to three bedrooms, maybe more, at least two or three. There's no way you can get two or three cars on the side of the road in front of the house. The roads aren't that wide. I mean, if there was a situation come up where a fire truck needed to come down through there or an ambulance, there's no way they can get through there. The roads are not that wide.
Well, look, the parking would be off-street. You wouldn't be parking on the street.
I thought the gentleman said on-street parking. Is there any on-street requirements?
No, it's off-street parking.
Okay. And you said it was two to three per bedroom, is that correct?
Suggested is one per bedroom. One off-street per bedroom, no on-street parking.
Okay. Well, with the lot sizes being as they are, you know, 40-foot wide is really not that much, so, but at the end of the day, I'd like to see the board turn down the CUPs. Thank you.
All right, thank you.[1533.13][1533.13](APPLAUSE) All right, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world tonight like to speak?
I would.
Okay, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Tammy, and my husband Troy is here with me. We also own a home at Chesapeake Beach Estates.
Ma'am, ma'am, what's your name, please?
It's Tammy and Troy Embry, and we own a home in Chesapeake Beach Estates at Parker and Washington.
Okay.
And I'm also requesting that this conditional permit be denied. My husband and I bought this community, in this community, to be with family around us. My husband's family's owned this lot since the 50s. We're comfortable walking our dog here the past year. The changes have been tremendous. The lack of respect in the neighborhood is unreal. I should not be put in a situation due to the board of supervisors making a rule and a homeowner not here to approach someone on the beach and jeopardize my own safety to tell them it's private property because they are not enforcing the rules. My husband and I now have to pay another monthly bill because we've installed cameras on our home, because we have people going through our yards, we've had golf carts running through our yards, we've had to pay to install a fence in our yard to keep our own dog safe due to dogs running off-leash and golf carts going through our yard to stop it. I don't think that's fair that I am paying because of other people's irresponsibilities. I'm at a very busy intersection at Parker and Washington. We sat here as I'm speaking to you and watching people blow the intersection. Golf carts, I also had the experience with the gentleman riding on top of the golf cart over the weekend. The statement about the community fireworks in the woods is so not true that was spoke to earlier. I don't think I should be put in a safety situation because of lack of respect from people coming into this neighborhood that don't care because they're only here for a week and then they leave. So that's our concern and why I'm requesting for this to be denied as well.
All right. Okay, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Would anyone else in the virtual world like to speak tonight?
Yes, sir, I would.
Yes, ma'am, what's your name and all?
My name is Heidi Hessler Allen. My husband Tim and I own and Chesapeake Beach Estates on Fletcher Drive. What I'd like to say first is thank you for hearing everyone's voices. I know it's not an easy job. I don't want to waste your time by repeating everything that has already been said regarding the denial of all five CUP requests. I do feel the same way. I'll only add that there is not enough parking at these homes for the renters. There is no parking on the road or side road near our beach, yet the short-term renters load up their cars, park up and down the street, blocking any possibility of an emergency vehicle to get through if need be. Our neighborhood is being turned into a business park that no longer feels like a safe haven for our families. Our lots are too small and too close together. Mr. Johnson stated that there are rules in place for the CUPs now, and that is true. The first rule has already been broken by all the short-term rental owners, where they were to stop running until a CUP was obtained. They never did. Things have changed since COVID. People feel like the rules don't apply to them anymore, and the entitlement is just sickening. I would like to see my safe haven stay just that, a safe haven. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak tonight?
Raise your hand. Oh, geez, oh, unmute.
Anybody raising a hand?
Oh, my God, raise your hand.
Raise your hand.
Hello? Would you like to speak tonight?
Hi, yes. Sorry, we had a slight unmuting issue. Apologies. My name is Kim Bivins. Uh, we own a property at 179 Parker Road in Chesapeake Beach Estates, and I support all of our neighbors in the comments to not approve the five cup applications for Chesapeake Beach Estates. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Would anyone else in the virtual world like to speak tonight?
Anybody else raising their hand?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Liz Allen, 117 Lane Road, Revo, Virginia, Chesapeake Beach Estates. I fully support the board of supervisors not approving the cup for the five applicants. I think I'm not going to reiterate everything that has been said tonight. I think you can see clearly the problems that have incurred, and I would appreciate you taking into consideration everything that has been said, all the letters that have been written, and please, taking into consideration your full-time residents and your taxpayers. Thank you so much.
All right. Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak tonight?
Hi, uh, yes, sir. My name is Tori Hessler Allen. Uh, my mom and dad own 114 Fletcher at Chesapeake Beach Estates, and I just wanted to let you know, I, I don't want to repeat everything that everybody said, but I'm twenty-eight years old, and I've been coming to this beach since I was in my mom's womb, and not once have I ever turned the corner and felt like I didn't know a friendly face, and, you know, not once have I ever felt like it's been unsafe in this area up until this point, and for that, I definitely think that we should deny all of the requests. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Yes, please. My name, my name is Amy Rose. My parents, Dave and Terry, live at 23 Chesapeake Beach Road, and I would like to request that you all do not approve the Airbnbs, um, in our neighborhood. I'd like to keep this community a community and not a vacation housing site for people that we do not know. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Would anyone else in the virtual world like to speak?
Hi, yes, I would like to say something too.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, my name is Krista Allen, and my grandmother Carolyn Nicholas has a house in 117 Lane Road. We have been coming down here for so many years. I have been coming down to this beach house ever since I was like five years old. We love the community. We love this beach, and we would just like to keep it that way. We are not Myrtle Beach. We are not Outer Banks, and we would like to keep this little private paradise to ourselves. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Would anyone else in the virtual world like to speak? Anyone else in the virtual world like to speak? All right. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi there. Um, I'm sorry, I couldn't figure out how to get it unmuted. Actually, uh, out of town. I, I really wanted to be there, but I'm on my way out of town right now.
All right. Sir, sir, would you state your name and address, please?
Yes, my name is Dave Sloop.
What was that?
Along with a friend, uh, two, I own two properties there, uh, 98 Martin and 112 Martin Lane. And, uh, I, you know, I've heard a lot of people with a lot of, uh, similar complaints tonight, and, uh, a lot of these, uh, you know, aren't verifiable. A lot of them are complaining about people that are driving around in the neighborhood, and, uh, one lady even shared about someone who came from outside the neighborhood, and I would just share that for me, my first time in the neighborhood, I met people on the beach, they, they said they'd been coming there their whole life, and they don't even live in Chesapeake Beach Estates. So I do believe that probably is a problem, people coming from outside. We're talking about five short-term renters in this neighborhood, and the volume of problems being discussed, it seems likely that it's a great habit. Now, I'm not trying to dismiss anyone's individual accounts. I know that we have had almost no reported issues, uh, with the exception of, uh, you know, uh, some misunderstanding or some confusion about property lines regarding our beach there at 98 Martin Lane, which, which is shared. But I would just say, when we came, when I came to the last meeting, what was shared to us is that no one was trying to stop us from doing what we're doing, but put conditions on it, that we were going to have rules around it. In fact, when I tried to share my concerns that we were, uh, they were asking you as the board to function as their HOA, I was interrupted and said, no one is going to stop you from doing this. Someone on the board there said that. So I'm, I'm kind of alarmed at, uh, thoughts that the decision here is to deny these. I thought we were going to talk about what the conditions would be. So I just wanted to say, I've worked really hard, um, to work with the CBCC, and I hope to continue to do that, and, uh, I just had to speak up.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Would anyone else like to speak tonight?
Yes, sir. I would like to comment on...
All right. Would you, would you come up and state your name, please?
I'm Donna Bailey Wheeler, and we are right next door to...
What's your address, too, ma'am? If you don't mind.
25 Martin Lane and 84 Martin Lane. And we are right next door to his Airbnbs. And he said that he's had no issues. That's because we have been polite to the renters, because we know it's not, you know, they don't know what to expect when they come. And so we have not, but a couple of times, had to speak to them and ask them to please move their stuff because they're taking up the whole beach. And we have, I've approached David the year that we had twenty-one people in his house on the point, shooting off fireworks, and he can say what he wants to. We've tried to act normal and not put up a bad atmosphere until we could get all this resolved because we knew the association was working on it. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Would anyone else like to speak tonight?
I'd like to speak, oh, it's David Sloop.
All right. Yes, sir.
My name's Chris Geiser. I'd like to speak on behalf of 98 and 112 Martin Lane. You know, so I'm part owner with Dave Sloop, who spoke over...
Uh, sir, that, that hearing is not up at the time.
Sorry? Oh, I thought we were doing all the...
No, no, we're only doing one at a time.
I can understand why it's confused.
All right. Um, anybody else like to speak tonight? All right. If no one else wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing to matters before the board.
Can the applicant have a chance to say something?
Yes, I will give the applicant a chance to say something.
I just want to say that all of these complaints have not been from people who've been at my house. I do know that there's problems in the neighborhood, but the same people in this room, I had to put up a six-foot privacy fence so I don't even see the beach because they're flipping golf carts at night, they're shooting off fireworks. I had my girlfriends over last weekend for wine on my patio, and a loose dog came up and ate our charcuterie. Not the end of the world, but like the loose dogs are not coming from my renters. There's, I feel like the people that stood up here today should take an oath before they speak because it's not actually true and fact of what they're saying. It's not short-term rentals, and I think that they know that, and they know it's not coming from my house, but I've never had seven vehicles on my property. It wouldn't even fit. So I just feel like all of these things are so astronomically exaggerated. People that are paying four hundred dollars a night to stay somewhere or five hundred dollars are not trashing beaches, they're not leaving trash behind. It's just, and now that all these comments came on my hearing, I feel a little bit attacked because I don't even rent a golf cart with my home, so it couldn't have been anybody that was at my house. I don't know. I just think that I was told I'd be grandfathered in. I'm doing all the right things. I'm happy to comply, but we're at your mercy, so... Too many questions for me?
All right. And the board, what, any board members have any questions?
So you, you're saying you never had any problems today?
Never, never, never. No, I haven't.
Our renters have worn a path down the side of the hill to our private beach.
All right. Ladies, ladies, gentlemen, gentlemen, hold on now, ladies and gentlemen.
So you, you've never had any...
And the only person that they kicked off the beach was my brother and my nephew. It wasn't a random person. I have a beach. I mean, Debbie, do you have a beach? Do you have a beach in your house?
Sometimes.
Okay. So I do too, because I'm, and I take care of my jetties. I invested in them. So I invested in my rickshaw. Like I'm, I had a septic, a non-working septic when I bought the home, and there was literally raw sewage going onto the public beach or the community beach and into the bay. I've invested in making it better. I'm paying higher property taxes because I am beachfront. So I'm doing all of the right things, and I've never, I've never had somebody flip a golf cart for any of those things that they're speaking of, or a loose dog. I don't allow pets, so... That's it. And I have cameras, and I see everybody else's dogs in my yard, so I get it. Like, it's a problem, but that's not coming from renters.
So you never had to call the sheriff department?
The only time I called the sheriff department was on four adults who were looking through my bedroom windows. Yes, and it was my neighbors, and they said, yes, they were, they had their hands like this, up on my windows, because they knew the people that lived there before, and they were always allowed on that property. I, it's a different world down here, and I get it, but I've not caused any problems so...
All right. Any other questions from the board?
Um, this is Dave Miller. I do have a question.
I've closed the public hearing, sir.
Okay.
Any other comments, ma'am?
Do you have sufficient, how many bedrooms do you have in the house?
Three.
Do you have three car spaces, spaces for cars?
And a golf cart and a Vajevsky, but they're not for use for the, for the guests.
And all your spaces are off-street parking?
Correct. And my insurance only allows certain things, so I, more so than what, like he's proposing, my insurance has more rules than, um, you know, for them to insure the home.
Such as?
The fire thing that I was talking about, um, those kind of things.
Oh. Three bedrooms? How many bedrooms? You said three?
Three.
And by the suggested conditions would be eight people. How many people do you rent out to as, as...
A max of seven.
Seven.
It's a small house. It's a cottage. I mean, and, and I want to deliver a great experience for my guests, so I'm not going to put twelve people in a tiny house. If my family's there, that's different, you know, my kids and their friends, but, um, I get reviewed based on how clean it is and how well it's kept and the access I provide and, um, communication, so...
Do the sites you use allow for community people to make comments?
No. You can only make a comment if you, you mean a review? Yeah, if you've had a transaction.
So that in one sense is a one-sided review?
For my guests.
And from people who read it, they do not know the alleged problems that they potentially are causing others?
No, I'm very clear that the people in the neighborhood are not very kind.
I'm not talking about that, but suppose, for example, if one of your renters, for lack of a better word, actually caused a problem...
I would hear it from all of these people. I would hear it.
No, but they would not have a chance to then comment on your renting site?
Not on a ga, no, because you leave a comment on somebody's profile. It's not like a comment on a trip. It's not like a blog where it's an open forum. You're reviewing the actual person. But if my renter was causing a problem, one of these people would tell me, 100%.
So you, you never had any complaints from your neighbors about loud noise or...
No. And I live at the house next to the beach. I hear the loud noise. I hear it all night. I hear the fireworks. They have bans on the hill till eleven o'clock at night. I have two little kids. I get it.
Where, where do you live when, you rent 134?
Occasionally.
All right. Where do you live if not on 134?
I have a home in Montross and I have a home in Fairfax.
But you don't have a home there, other than this?
Not there, no.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions?
And my home in Montross has gone through the similar process, and, I mean, happy to abide by any rule you set.
Different counties do different things.
I know.
And towns do different, too.
Yes.
All right. Any other questions, comments? You, you have anything else you want to add?
Was all of that directed just at me, or...
No, no.
It's going to be general.
Everybody basically saying, ask it all.
Yeah, everybody.
You were, you were the tip of the spear, so to speak.
Yeah, that stinks.
Hey, person of mine.
But you, you, you don't feel you need to improve on anything, doors, drinking all night?
I have cameras. Like, I know when people go in and out every single door, every single time. I, I, I see them. There's no smoking on my property. If I see somebody smoking, like, it's a rule of my insurance. They get fined by Airbnb, and I can just kick them out that easily, so... I'm pretty, I have nine short-term rentals in total that I manage and oversee.
All right.
It's not a hobby for me.
Ma'am?
It's not a hobby. Like, it's an actual, it's a business, yeah, and I pay taxes. And I, I did volunteer, and I did participate, and I did do the fundraising. I hosted a stop at the poker run until they were so miserable to be around that I didn't want to participate in their... Money is not, I didn't make a donation if that's what they need to be happy, but you...
That probably would help.
That's right.
I mean, it would show good faith.
I gave them all shots when they came to my house.
You're not selling it, so that's okay.
I was trying to be the nice neighbor.
I know.
You have two kids in public school, you said?
All right. Any other questions? All right.
Take my seat? All right.
Thank you, ma'am. No, ma'am, public hearing's closed. All right. What's the pleasure of the board? Or does the board have any comments or questions?
Just curious on what, what took place in 2013 regarding the rental problems. Evidently, there's a history.
I can answer, I can answer that.
And, um...
Ladies, gentlemen, please.
And it appears to be a lot of legal matters in this as well, trespassing. And, you know, that's, that's a whole issue in itself. But that trespassing in legal matters is something that this board doesn't have any control of.
No, the board has no right in legal matters, so it's not much we can do but any of that. You can enforce a covenants down there. The subdivision doesn't have a covenants. And the lots were formed way before the Chesapeake Bay Act. They were formed back in the fifties. Some of them might have been formed in the late forties.
Before zoning was enacted.
Way before zoning, that's right. So size didn't matter, the smallest thing you could get, and now it's created a lot of problems.
Well, there are property rights, clearly, but there's also property rights of everybody else, too. Can the rights of...
Can the rights of one individual property owner outweigh the rights of the other? That's what we have to weigh. And conditions granting permits, whatever, is part of a zoning ordinance. What's the current violation for a zoning ordinance, Mr. Gregory?
Violation of the zoning ordinance is a class-three misdemeanor under Section 148-177 of the county code. It's, it's basically equivalent to, under state law, what is classified as a class-two misdemeanor. It's a fine, not less than $10 nor more than $1,000, but no jail time.
Right. But the board can revoke permits, too, if granted. And I can personally say from, with emergency vehicles, since I'm on the rescue squad, that actually serves this area, the roads are tight. But I can tell you one thing that slows people's squads down. There's nothing else so speed bumps. Not much fun carrying a pa, passenger and the, I mean, a patient in the back of a squad, you're doing all that. We slow down. I can guarantee you that. So, I, and, but I can tell you, if people drive, we get more golf carts, I mean EMS, are getting more golf cart accidents because of basically stupidity. And like, because they're trying to jump that bridge, it's a matter of time before us or the chief of EMS, his crew gets called out there.
Have you had minutes out in that area?
We've had calls in there of enough of golf carts that I'm aware of. But it is, and I remember the fire, sheriff also is involved with the fire department, so he knows about it. So roads are tight, and roads are tight just getting into your own driveway if it wasn't even in the subdivision. There's the fire department, like, they have 12-foot all the way around for their trucks. Our squads aren't that tall, but they, sometimes, it's tough getting in even with a squad. But this is a real challenge of balancing both rights of the individual versus the rights of the others. And again, we're not getting into the issue of who has a right to that beach. In this particular application, the applicant has their own beach, and they wouldn't have any need to do that. I went to law school, and I remember my property instructor, Dean Norville, he said, real estate has a bundle of rights. How much bundles can be transferred to a renter in this situation? Dean Norville's in heaven right now, I guess. But I don't know that question, and I'm not even going to delve into that. That is a question for lawyers in our courts. But it's a question and balancing act that right here. And the other thing is, there needs to be as much possible communication between the owners and the next-door property owners and adjacent owners. Communication goes a long way, both sides. And sometimes things can be aired out, and sometimes ignored. That's why we got courts. And obviously, this subdivision was prior to any restrictive covenants law like we do have now, where restrictive covenants can mandate a homeowners association which has ruled. This is, as I understand, a voluntary association, which has its own challenges by itself. But again, trespassing on somebody else's property with notice is a class-one misdemeanor. You'd go to jail for 12 months, and that is something the sheriff's office might get involved with. So if renters there are trespassing, they can be held accountable. And also, Virginia law has a very unique one. There is one conspiracy code, the conspiracy to trespass. So the landowner in some circumstances could be held liable, too. And giving note, I mean, we talked about a possible condition of putting the corners in so they see it. It's a shame that property owners might have to put trespassing signs on their own property to get people off of it. But that's what you can do. The trespassing law requires two things, notice and presence. If you put a sign and you come on there, you're trespassing, or if you're told to get off and you don't, that's trespassing. I used to be a juvenile probation officer. I dealt with it. Did charge a few juveniles. But the question is, some of, I, my wife, we just were in the Outer Banks, as somebody mentioned, and we were on a road right down to the public beach, so we had people going by, but they were respectful. That's a community that is used to that. I don't remember the verbo, whoever, my wife handled it. That's why we didn't, couldn't have the budget approved before we did. Otherwise, I'd have been by Zoom. But the question is, how to balance? And this one, I mean, this Ms. Corey, if I'm pronouncing her name right, this is her business, too. And it's a challenge to do both. That's, that's where I'm stuck at, how to balance. And I frankly do not question anybody's truthfulness who spoke to you tonight. Nobody was put under oath. But I don't question people who come here. I have to assume on face value they're telling me the truth. And, so we have complaints in general, but I have not heard specific complaints to Ms. Corey's property. And that's where I stand.
Sure. How many, how many times have you been called in that area? Just for you. Right off, right off hand, have you had a lot of complaints?
I don't have any idea.
A lot of complaints or no, a few complaints or?
Well, very few since I've been here in the last 23 years. I can't tie anything specific to short-term rental. Pro or con, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to be neutral in the matter, so I'm not getting in the middle of it.
No, no, I wouldn't want you to do that. I just, okay.
But I, I can give you a number.
Okay.
And the one problem for the sheriff is, his officers, deputies, they're technically deputies, cannot arrest anybody for a misdemeanor unless it occurs in their presence with some exceptions. And trespassing is not necessarily one of them. So if there's going to be a trespassing warrant, assuming there's proper notice done, then that's going to have to be brought by the individual who saw it and, and is willing to swear it to warrant. That's a challenge. That's the way the law in Virginia is. His officers cannot charge anybody unless they seize on their presence or the limited exception, the sheriff knows it very well. And that, and the same thing with zoning ordinances, any violations, you'd have to refer, the people would have to refer it to Mr. Marston to investigate to possibly avoid. Complaints without going to the proper persons won't get resolved. I mean, I don't want to give me a magic wand that this, obviously, there's been evidence or, I mean, statements about being rented. Obviously, if it's, that's in violation of ordinance right there. And it could also be treated as an after-the-fact permit, which then has enhanced fees, but compared to what they're charging, it's, unfortunately, it could be some chump change in comparison. But. I don't know. And as Mr. Haney did say, these lots are small. It's obviously is, is applicable to R3 because of the small size. You got yourselves, Fleeton Beach, and you got Sherwood Forest, Bay Quarter Shores are specific subdivisions of record. There are other smaller ones that are the issues, I mean, just, Bay Quarter Shores are 70 feet wide. That's still not wide in comparison. And now the normal zoning ordinance is at least an acre of land. So things are different now as you go along.
Yes, difficult, difficult situation.
Frankly, Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to continue this to next month to, one, Ms. Corey has mentioned Irvington has some conditions, what she's put in her insurance, it's like, some of those things could possibly be considered also. So if Ms. Corey could share those concerns, uh, those things would help possibly, possibly. The biggest, well, if, biggest word in English language, if that was done, it might make a difference. But I would also say that in the meantime, I recommend, I wish more zoning applicants would do it, would be talk to their neighbors before it comes to us. Nothing, nothing against you, Ms. Corey, at all, not saying you didn't. But sometimes if applicants could talk to their surrounding impacted people, they could resolve some of the conflicts and could have good conditions, oh, we agree to this, and we agree to this. You could put that in there. So, but that's, I make a motion that we continue Ms. Corey, since we haven't officially dealt with them. I know it's putting some burden, but the other way could be a down, too, so.
Seven. That's a good suggestion.
All right, so your motion is to carry over?
Ms. Corey.
Ms. Corey, and let her give some information from her insurance.
She already had done some, but it's like.
She's already done some.
And any conditions, other counties or jurisdictions, to try to balance both sides of the coin. But again, any violation of any such conditions can result in revocation of the permit. It'd have to come back to this board for a hearing on such.
All right, we have a motion. Second, any other discussion? All right, no other discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you, Ms. Corey. All right, next request is, is a request by, excuse me, by Christopher and Laura McMillan. Philip, would you take over, please?
Yes, sir. We have a request by Christopher and Laura McMillan, owners for a conditional use permit to allow vacation home rental for properties owned R3 residential restricted. Property is shown as taxman parcel 38C39-10 and is located at 159 Harbor Road in Chesapeake Beach subdivision.
All right, thank you. Is either Mr. or Mrs. McMillan here tonight? Would you want to come up and say anything, please?
Um, first of all, I snoozed my Airbnb and VRBO listings back when I talked to Mr. Martins a while ago, and I would ask for documentation or proof that my VRBO and listings are still available, because they can't be found. There is a Down by the Bay in Cape Charles, but that's not me. I would also question the truthfulness to the complaints, because I haven't rented my house since, since November. I never spoke to Charlotte. My mom's never been introduced to her. She gave my mom the finger, but, I mean, not three times, Chip knows my mom. He's back there, so, I mean, I don't know. I don't do anything wrong. My guests do go to the beach, but as you said, the beach, it's not owned by anybody. There was a land survey done. They were told that in a meeting, you know, so. I do have a golf cart. My kids drive it, just like all the other kids in the neighborhood. I've got five. I have a three-bedroom house. I only sleep seven, because I, in all, there's seven of us. So the one issue that was brought to my attention was coming late. I rectified that, but I came late last night after work. I mean, I don't know what else to say. I keep my property clean. I mean, there's, you can go right now, there's a whole lost and found of people and their stuff that was sat there. There was a guy who left his chair there. His mom owns a property in the beach, left it there for the whole weekend, but I'm sure that was my fault. I don't know. Everybody in that neighborhood, all the kids in there, dogs, it's not just me. It's not my guests. Like I said, I haven't rented since November, and I can show you the proof. You know, I got paperwork that shows I haven't rented, actually, my coworker. I didn't rent to her. She was going through a bad time. I let her and her son come. And my daughter's teacher's coming next month as a gift, a teacher gift, so.
Okay.
That's it.
How many people do you normally rent to when you, when you do, when you do rent?
Seven.
Seven, and you have, what, three bedrooms?
Three bedrooms, one bath.
And you have?
I have plenty of parking.
Plenty of parking, off-street?
Off-street. I could probably fit, if I wanted to move cars up into the yard, six. But, I mean, my truck, my husband's truck, my mom's truck, stepdad, generally, that's who's there. Maybe my brother's vehicle, but I only allow two vehicles. That's it.
All right, any board members have any questions?
You mentioned something about a survey?
Yes, a land survey was done on the beach.
Can you share that with Mr. Marston and?
I already have.
We haven't seen it. We haven't seen it.
Well, he didn't give, he didn't give it to you, then. I gave it to him back in April, May, or Mr. McKenzie, maybe?
Well, I can, I can tell you this, a surveyor can draw lines.
You want me to text it to you?
No, we texted Mr. Marston, but I can tell you, a surveyor does not establish boundary or ownership. That's left up to the court.
I didn't pay for the survey. Another community member paid for it for the neighbors so that they would kind of calm down, but.
A surveyor begs an opinion. I can say that because my father was a surveyor.
I'm not arguing with you. I'm just.
I'm just saying, but share the survey so we can see it, then.
Sure.
It's additional, new information that we need to see.
Oh, okay. I mean, I'll send it to Mr. Marston.
Mr. Marston.
You have it? Okay.
Well, then, he can share it.
Okay, yeah. I mean, we've all got teenagers. There's, I mean, I don't know. Everybody in that neighborhood's got kids. I mean, you should have seen the Fourth of July celebration. It was fabulous. The club did a great job. I thoroughly enjoyed my time. But we're all packed in there like sardines for the beach. And I didn't participate in the, um, like, the donations, because I was told not to by my attorney, because then that would be considered me applying by their rules, which I didn't want.
Do your attorney advise you not to apply by the rules?
Right, no. My attorney, he encouraged me not to pay the voluntary civic association fee, because he said, if you, if you did this, that means you agree to their rules. So I didn't. But the year before, I did, and my kids and I, we were out there at the golf cart bridge, volunteering, setting up, all that stuff.
Enough said.
So.
Like I said, that's communication working together, but anyway.
I tried.
I'm not arguing.
I tried to talk to them. We had multiple meetings. They spent $39,000 coming after me and the rest of the short-term rentals. We tried, and they initially sent me a, a agreement saying if I paid them $6,000, they'd let the guests go on the beach. I don't make that kind of money off the house. I only made like $14,000 off the house. I just kind of covered, barely, it didn't cover the bills, but, I mean, I put it back in the house. I put flooring in it, air conditioning, all that kind of stuff. So, I mean, I, I don't know. I do my best, but I love the house, you know, I love going to the community. I like to wave at everybody, and my kids were waving. They do the same thing, so. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
All right. Board members having any comments for open public hearing? All right, open to public hearing? Charlotte Pence, you spoke last time. Winnie Dunn.
I spoke last time.
Ma'am?
I spoke last time.
Yes, you did. Chris Huxey, Huxco? Yes, Laura McMillan, she just spoke, Arnold Day, Chris Burnett. Everybody has spoken, and I see. Anyone else like to speak that has not spoken?
My name is Susan Day, and I live at 105 Virginia Road in Chesapeake Beach Estates. I wanted to speak to what Laura said about her reasonings for not joining our civic club, you know, that her attorney told her not to. And that is so that she can continue to use our beach and have her renters use it and just completely ignore the no trespassing signs that we have there. We do have bylaws that have been filed with the county, and those bylaws states that they cannot be on our beach. But, so she doesn't want to be a member of the civic club, because then she, you know, her lawyer's telling her, if you do that, then you're going to have to abide by that. So if you're not a member of the civic club, then you can just ignore the trust, no trespassing signs and keep coming there. Laura did help out last year. She was a member of the civic club. Soon as our bylaws were renewed and that clause was put in there and approved by a vote, a majority vote, she then dropped out of the club. So there's been a lot of hearsay that's hard to navigate through. But at the bottom of all of that, we do have trespassing signs in place that we got, you know, permission from a lawyer to put there. We did have a, we went through a lawsuit to make sure that we were doing it correctly. We did have a, we went through a lawsuit to make sure that we were doing it correctly. We went through the process here to get the CUPs, you know. We did that process correctly. They, I can't speak to Laura, but we do have Airbnb people that are, like Andrea, that are continuing to advertise and rent, you know, that their places are for rent in our community when they don't have a CUP and they don't know for sure if they're going to get one. So they're already ignoring that process. That's a fact. They are coming on our beach when there are no trespassing signs already in place. That's a fact. So these are things that are actually happening, you know. The comments, you know, about she said, he said, this, that, and the other, that's a whole lot to filter through. But you guys have come up with a conditional use permit that to this point has been ignored by the majority of the Airbnb people we have in our neighborhood, completely ignored. And they continue to do so. I mean, they're going to, they're going to, they've got their stuff booked out through the summer into the fall. So they're not waiting on you guys to approve their CUPs. They've already made the decision that they're going to rent these places out. So that's the big question we need to be asking. And as far as Andrea's beach, she has one for about 15 minutes in the morning, and then it's nothing but rocks. So yes, her renters come down to our beach because she doesn't have one at later part of the day at all. It's nothing but rocks there. So I just hope that these can be denied. If nothing else on the premise that at this point, they've already said to the county, we don't care that you've come up with this process. We're going to keep renting our houses out, and we're already doing it. So I am asking that they be denied on that premise, if nothing else. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the, when and the name of the lawsuit?
The name?
It wasn't a lawsuit.
It wasn't a lawsuit.
No, it was, yeah.
You say lawsuit, I want to look at the court case.
I'm sorry, it wasn't a lawsuit. It was, we had an attorney just to make sure that when we were coming up with our new bylaws, that what we were putting in there was legal and correct. So that when she mentioned the amount of money we spent, it wasn't going after Laura. It was to try to create these bylaws and make sure that we were doing it correctly. Sorry. So that's what it was. Thank you.
All right. Have no one else on the sign-up sheet? All right, would anyone else like to speak that has not spoken? Ma'am?
Hi. I'm Lorraine Trice, 29 Washington Drive, Chesapeake Beach. First, let me say thank you for all the time you have put into this. Our family has been in this community and donated and worked hard to make it what it is today since the mid-'60s. Being on the board for so many years to help preserve our community, it hurts my heart to see the lack of respect the STR owners have for our community and our beach. I sent you all an instance the last week in June where Mr. Forrester, I sent it to Mr. McKenzie and Mr. Marston, where his customers completely ignored our no trespassing signs. And when I told them the beach was for landowners and accompanied guest-only, the customer called Mr. Forrester, and he told them to go ahead and go anyway. And she walked away from me. And they went down to the beach, in which time another neighbor called the sheriff's department. And Officer Sanford did come down and speak to them, and I sent a picture of him. They walked right by two no trespassing signs, private property. So they left. And I did feel bad because it was not their fault. They were misled. My husband donates his time and his tractor to work on the beach owned by the civic club and available to all landowners of CBE and, of course, the members of the club to help preserve it as well as the roads in our community, which the club maintains with gravel. We drive golf carts in our community, and those renting do not observe the speed limit most of the time that I have seen and don't personally care because they have no investment in our community. I would like to state to what Laura said, the survey that she said was done by a landowner, there were no coordinates on it. It was just a bunch of lines drawn on a paper. I have a copy on my phone, which I can forward to Mr. Marston and Mr. McKenzie of our deed that owns the Beach Hill and lots on the beach that have gone to beach. I appreciate your time again. And considering this, I am against the STRs. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? Would anyone else like to speak in the virtual world? Anyone in the virtual world would like to speak?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Liz Allen, 117 Lane Road, Reville, Virginia, Chesapeake Beach Estates. I wanted to advise you that I've already sent information to Mr. Marston as well as Mr. McKenzie, that Laura is currently still advertising on TripAdvisor. I have sent the link to them right now. She is currently advertising, which is going against her cup application. In addition to the survey that she mentioned that was completed and paid for by a personal homeowner, however, it was never recorded at the county. And therefore, I do not believe this is considered a legal survey. I'm against this approval for her cup. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
All right, anyone else in the virtual world like to speak that has not spoken? Anyone else in the virtual world would like to speak that has not already spoken? All right, no one else wants to speak? Then close the public hearing and address before the board.
I thought she spoke.
You've already spoken one time, ma'am. All right. You want the applicant to come back again?
Yep. That's our practice.
That's our practice is what we started.
Right.
Mrs. McMillan, would you like to come back up and comment again, please?
Sure, I'm looking for the TripAdvisor account that I don't have. Yes.
All right, would you like to make some comments?
I don't have a TripAdvisor account. I'm looking for it now. I've never signed up on TripAdvisor.
All right, would you like to make some comments on what you've heard?
A lot of it's lies. A lot of it is bullying, discrimination. That's what a lot of it is.
All right.
And, I mean, if there's documentation, then, I mean, I can't. Then it didn't happen. If it's not documented, then it didn't happen. And it was never, if there was an issue with anybody that I've had at my house since November, you know, because I haven't rented my house since November. It's never brought to me. It's just me and my family, the one issue.
Okay. Any board members have any questions or comments?
I move we continue this one also to look at the new information, that, what you shared and what somebody else shared, so we can look at the survey.
I mean, I have TripAdvisor pulled up.
No, I'm talking about the survey and the other stuff.
I don't have it.
I have one lady back up and advised to let her speak. That lady wanted to speak. Advised to let her speak.
No, I'm saying, like.
I'm going to let her speak.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
All right, comments, comment this way, please.
Oh, he's saying that TripAdvisor is a, like a forum for reviewing or like? Customers.
All right, okay.
Like, go eat here, this place has good food situation.
All right. Ma'am, you have anything else?
No.
All right. Ma'am, you wanted to speak a minute, and I cut you off, and you had not spoke on this issue. I will allow you to speak at this time. She hadn't spoken before.
She's spoken, it's Steve Jet's turn.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, it's not necessarily pertaining to this individual, but it's just, is the board supervisor's going to allow STRs to continue without cup approval?
Do not know yet.
Okay.
That's what we're trying to decide now.
Well, that's what, yes, I'm the Guinea, so.
All right, that's fine. Thank you, ma'am. All right, Tommy, you have a motion?
I have a motion to continue this. Next.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Aye. All right, that will be continued. All right, next one is a request by David Sloop. Philip?
Yes, sir. We have a request by David Sloop, owner for a conditional use permit to allow vacation home rental. The property is owned R3 residential restricted. The property is shown as taxman parcel 38C310-10 and is located at 98 Martin Lane in Chesapeake Beach subdivision.
All right, Mr. Sloop, are you here tonight?
He was on the phone, but I think Chris Geisler, part-owner.
You were a part-owner?
Yes, sir.
All right, would you state your name, address, please?
Chris Geisler, 98 Martin Lane. I don't know if you want to do 98 and 112 together. It's the same owner. Save us some time, but yeah.
What's her name again?
Chris Geisler.
You're going to try to do two at one time?
Yeah, they're Jason Properties.
Oh, Jason Properties, all right, okay. Yes, sir, go ahead.
So we've heard, you know, all the discussion, and we can appreciate everybody's thoughts and feelings. I think one thing that's unique about ours is we have come into an agreement with the voluntary board, and so we've gone ahead and taken away our rights. We feel like we've said, hey, no access to community beach or community amenities, took away the golf cart, all the advertising for that. And that was all in agreement. Like you said, communication. And I feel like we worked with our neighbors. We want to be great neighbors. And so that's something that we did at our expense and feel like it's been working really well. Haven't heard of any other issues, you know. So we feel like we've done what, I think, what, probably above and beyond what the cup would ask for. And so we've abided by those conditions and more so. And we want to be great neighbors. We've paid the voluntary, you know, association fees to contribute and happy to do whatever and continue to work with all of our neighbors, so.
What does the agreement specifically say?
It basically is us giving up the rights to use the community beach, community amenities, no golf cart, no advertising for any of that. So our guests have to stay on our property, which is that peninsula right there.
You are, and both of your property, well, clearly 112 has clear waterfront access.
Yep.
98, depends on what I'm looking at a map, a picture of it.
Yep.
That has, maybe has waterfront. It's certainly got some beach.
Yeah, it does. I mean, that's kind of a smaller beach. That's not the community beach that people have been referring to, but. So, yeah, so we agreed to stop advertising for any community amenities and no golf cart. And we've taken all that away and feel like it's been working out pretty well. Yes, it's busy. Yes, there's guests there a lot, but haven't heard of any issues or complaints, you know, going up. So happy to answer any questions, but feel like we're trying to do whatever, you know, the board and the neighborhood association would like to have us do.
So you signed papers, statement you wouldn't do this?
Yes, sir.
And that has been signed by the association?
Yes, sir.
Now, you do have a little interesting access to get in there with that real sharp turn and that little marshy or wet spot there.
Yep.
What about, who maintains that road right there? Where you go around that real sharp turn and it's a little wet there?
Like at the far corner, the bottom-left corner of it?
Yeah.
I mean, I assume that it's maintained just like any other road in the community.
All right. Have you agreed to the proposed conditions?
Yep, yes, sir.
You have agreed to these conditions from Mr. Marston?
Yep, yep, we've been in communication.
Okay. All right. Have the board members have any questions? All right, sir. Let me open the public hearing, and we'll let you come back. Thank you. All right, going to open the public hearing. Let's see who we have. Lisa Elwood Beverley?
Byerly, our.
Byerly, okay. Ma'am? I cannot hear you. Oh, you've already spoken here. Okay, I'm sorry, couldn't hear you. All right. Mr. Gregory says that if you have some additional information, you may speak.
Not a repetition, but unique news.
Yes.
Yes, so we have complained to this, the owners, about issues with the private beach. And they are advertising one property for over the amount seven when there's only a two-bedroom house and the cup states that they should only be running to six. So they're not abiding by that.
All right, thank you.
That's not my understanding, so.
All right, I'll let you speak again in just a second, sir. All right, everybody else this seat has spoken.
Can I speak, please?
Just a minute, ma'am. Oh, well, I'll tell you what, go ahead and speak in. What's your name?
Jennifer Burnett. I own at 147 Virginia in Chesapeake Beach Estates. I actually have researched all the applications. It is my understanding they've only applied for one of their properties, of which the application's incomplete because all the signatures are not on it and all the questions are not answered. So are we looking at both of his properties tonight or just one?
We're looking at one right now.
And he spoke on both of them?
Yeah. Yes, he spoke because he's the same applicant.
Right, but he brought up both addresses. I just wanted to clarify, are we trying to approve both or just the one he applied for?
We are only.
He applied for both.
He applied for both, right.
He applied for both.
He applied for both?
Yes.
Well, I was just looking at one address. All right, he's, all right, he's applied for both.
The application that I read online was only one address.
It's one, I've only got one address here.
I got ninety, there's two, there's two lots, 98 and 112. Yeah, item, Mr. Chairman, item C on page 12 is David Sloop, and that 98 Martin.
Yeah, that's 98 Martin Lane, and the other one's 112. Yes, sir. That would be the next application, yes. All right, so he's spoken on both lots?
Yeah.
All right, fine. All right, my mistake.
But he spoke on both at the same time and.
At the same time?
We need to save some time. But give a fair error.
All right, you have anything else to say, ma'am?
No, sir, just looking through my records because I only have the one that was found on county site.
That's something else, too.
All right. All right, thank you then, ma'am.
I'm looking on the county site, and I see both of them.
All right, I was just looking here, what I had right in front of me.
I know, but I'm. The public notices under board supervisor has both of them listed.
Yeah, both of them are listed. I see it, too.
I just apologize for that. The one I'm looking at only has the signature for Sloop and only one address.
Yeah, both are listed. Yeah, I see it now. All right. The next person to sign up is Chris Grigler. Chris Grigler. All right, Paul Poet. All right, I have no one else on the sign-up sheet. Would anyone else like to speak that has not spoken? All right, would anybody in the virtual world like to speak? Anybody in the virtual world like to speak? All right.
Mr. Chairman, before you close the meeting, is anybody in the audience on the Chesapeake Bay Estates Board or that could speak for them about this agreement?
There are several board members here tonight.
Can somebody speak as to the existence and the.
Sir, can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me, sir?
Yes, ma'am, I can hear you.
Hi, my name is Liz Allen. I'm the past president for the last two years of Chesapeake Beach Civic Club. I took, I ended my reign, I guess you could say, in December, but I can answer any questions you might have about the Geisler-Sloop Homes because I was part of that negotiation process.
What is your understanding of the agreement between your association and Mr. Sloop and his co-owner?
So, in order for them to continue renting, they established the fact that they were not allowed to use any of our amenities, and they agreed to that. They were gonna pay their annual dues. I can't say this year they have or they haven't for both or for one, because I'm not part of the Civic Club this year, the association board process. You could ask Jenny Burnett, or there are other people in the audience tonight that might be able to answer that question regarding their dues, but that was part of the process. They were supposed to also have additional insurance that cover their property along with our roads, et cetera, because if someone got hurt in our roads, it was our responsibility because we do maintain our roads, and we were concerned about the liability issue. Mr. Geisler and Mr. Sloop were very accommodating in working with us, and were willing to sign this agreement unlike the other ones in your audience tonight. We did offer that to Mr. Forster, Ms. McMillan, as well as Andrea Corey. However, Andrea did tell us that she was not going to rent, and we do have that directly from our attorney at the time.
All right.
Can I ask any other questions for you?
Would you comment?
We, there is an agreement between the parties.
There is an agreement, yes.
There is an agreement between us that they signed. And we can provide you copies if needed.
Should have a copy. Yeah, we should have a copy.
Yeah.
I'll be glad to send that to you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments?
No.
I'm, I'm wait till you come up. He's coming up.
Yeah, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Would you, would you like to come back up and speak now, sir?
I do have a question.
We have some questions for you.
Yes. How about, have you paid your dues?
Yes, sir. I mean, Dave Sloop's in charge of that, so I'm not sure if we pay this year or not, but if we haven't, we'll be happy to do that.
Next one.
How, how about the additional insurance?
Yes, we do have that. That's in everybody's best interest, ours included, so, yeah.
And what kind of insurance is that?
It's just a rider on a typical home insurance policy.
I got one question, and it's, and it's, don't mean to put you on the spot, but I guess I'm gonna put you on the spot, but as an investor, when you look at these properties and you, and you come into these small communities, do y'all have any, any hesitation of buying these properties realizing that you're not gonna be welcome? I mean.
I mean, I would, I would say the neighborhood was very welcoming, you know, when we were first meeting folks, and the county was very welcoming, says, hey, you can do what you want with your property. And so, you know, of course, we don't want to buy somewhere where it's gonna be an issue. Clearly, we have one here, but if, we feel like we've done everything we can do to try to rectify that and make it, you know, best-case scenario for everybody.
I'll just give you something.
You got anything else?
Nope.
Any other comments you'd like to make, sir?
Nope, thank you for your time.
Thank you then. All right, much pleasure, board.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve this both requests on 98 and 112 with the suggested conditions as proposed by Mr. Morrison and include additional conditions that pursuant to the agreement, the applicant and their renters shall not use golf carts on the roads, not use the amenities, excluding the road, of course, you gotta have that to get in, not use of the public beach you have your own at that, and maintain insurance for your liabilities and the roads. And that motion would also include the language. This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity conveyance, and the interest and the exercise of good zoning practices and pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
Second. All right, I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Obviously, I commend the applicant and the association, too. They work together the way it should have been done. Obviously, there were disagreements, and that's why it took some time to do. But you approached them, you gave up some rights that you may or may not have. I don't know, that's a lawyer, it's actually a court to make that decision. But you worked it through. And again, if you violate these conditions, then you can come back and lose your, your short-term rentals. And you're obviously investing. You don't want to do that. You've got enough people who can be watching you, I can guarantee you. So, it's in your interest financially to do so. But again, commend you and the association for working together, and I appreciate that.
If I could interrupt for a moment?
No, ma'am.
This is in reference to him following.
No, ma'am, ma'am, the public hearing has been closed.
Mr. Gregory had his hand up.
Mr. Gregory?
Mr. Chairman, I would just recommend the action.
All right, I move for 98 then.
You're gonna amend your motion?
I amend the motion, only include 98.
All right.
Second.
All right, the motion has been amended and seconded. Is there any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? Your motion passes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we now approve 112 with the same, the same language.
I still gotta open the hearing. I know, I know we're trying to speed. All right.
I'm trying to move it along, people. Lawyers.
All right, next one is a request by David Sloop again. Phillip?
We have a request by David Sloop, owner, for a conditional use permit to allow vacation home rental on properties owned R3 residential restricted. Property is located at 112 Martin Lane in Chesapeake Beach subdivision.
All right. Board of members have any comments?
Does anybody thing have anything to say different from what they said to the last one?
All right, would you like to comment, sir?
No, thank you.
All right.
As to the question, who asked the question that they paid their association dues?
Right.
They have, we have not received any dues to either property.
I think you were receiving it forthwith. Check what we have.
All right, good.
Good.
All right, public hearing can now. All right, anyone else would like to speak? Everybody I see on the sheet has already spoken. Anybody else would like to speak tonight? Anyone in the virtual world would like to speak tonight?
Who hasn't already spoken?
All right, yeah, anybody in the virtual world that has not spoken would like to speak.
Hello, can you hear me?
Ma'am, state your name.
Liz Allen, again, 117 Lane Road. How are you?
All right, now you've already spoken.
I know, but this is about a different property. Can I still speak?
You've already spoken on the same issues we're having tonight. Unless you have additional information.
There is additional information.
All right.
Mr. Sloop and Mr. Geisler have not paid voluntary dues this year, so just as an FYI, as well as in addition to part of the agreement, they do have to update their insurance every year, so just as an FYI to y'all on that.
All right.
Thank you for understanding me and hearing me.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, anyone else like to speak? All right, since no one else wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I move, I make the same motion I'd made for 98 Martin Lane with the same conditions, the same additional based upon the agreement, and I'm not gonna repeat my same magical language.
And all your language is about.
I see the county attorney give me a eye.
You got to do it, he says.
This motion is made in due consideration of the public health and safety, the general welfare of the community, public necessity conveying, convenience, and the exercise of good zoning practices and pursuant to the body's statutory authority.
I'd like you to motion. You're right on the motion.
You got the first one, you got the second one.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those against? All right, thank you.
And if you don't pay your.
You're all straight, sir.
If you don't pay your association by next month, I know we'll hear about it.
That's right.
All right, next we have a request by John Forster. Phillip, would you take over, please?
Yes, sir. We have a request by John J. Forster, owner, for a conditional use permit to allow vacation home rental on property zone R3 residential restricted. Property is shown as taxman parcel 38C3-4-10 and is located at 117 Beach Road in Chesapeake Beach subdivision.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is John Forster, and I do own a home at 117 Beach Road. It is a large, well-maintained home, adequately separated from other neighbors. I'm in, and the interest being strongly in favor of a good neighbor policy, I support the CUP effort to, I'm in favor of that. I support permitting efforts that establish occupancy restrictions, parking restrictions, and any other restrictions you think that we should have to be a good member of the community. I purchased the house in August of 2018 after it was on the market for about six months with no buyers. For the next three years, my family and I used the house at least once per month, year-round. However, starting in 2022, just last year, we listed the house on vacation rentals by owner so that we could offset some of our ownership costs when we were not there using the home. And I note that the property is not covered by an HOA, and our deed gives us beach asset, beach access. So, for that last year, we've operated fine using the beach, which we believe we have the deed and right to use. And so, my tenants have given me almost a universal five-star rating and have left rave reviews about the house and the neighborhood. Until last week, I've never had a complaint about my rental operations, and I'll be discussing that complaint in a second. My immediate neighbors have expressed to me support for my operations and have commented on how nice and respectful my tenants have been. Prior to approving a rental, I obtained the phone number and email of each tenant and inquire about the purpose of their vacation. Virtually all are families looking for a quiet vacation by the water. It's pretty, pretty consistent. When the county board, when your, when your board here voted on May 11th to establish a new CUP requirement for vacation home rentals in R3 zoning, I expected to receive some communication from the county about how to apply and any actions I needed to take, like, you know, what were the contingencies, et cetera. Unfortunately, I received no communication and heard about the existence of the CUP form only from my neighbors, so I looked for the form on the county website and did not find it. I then emailed the county to request the form, but did not receive any reply. Since one of my neighbors had a copy of the form, I received it by email from them. So, on June 21st, you know, just not too long ago, I submitted in person the CUP form to the county planning and zoning office in preparation for this hearing. It never occurred to me to cancel any pending vacation rentals because it seemed to me at the recent hearing that the Board of Supervisors strongly indicated support for the legality of vacation rentals that were well-managed. And also, there was a lot of support in favor of the economic development that VRBOs and Airbnbs bring into Northumberland County, which doesn't have many hotels, as you know. So, so it's a huge economic benefit. Let's see, never good, but, but. Okay, so it never occurred to me to cancel anything. When I received a note from VRBO, that's vacation rentals by owner, that someone complained that I was operating a residential rental without local permission, I immediately, in late June, removed the VRBO listing of pending action tonight. So, I, I took, I took it down. That was in June 28th or 29th. The house is thus currently not available for rent, and I apologize sincerely if my actions were not correct at first. But the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors, you know, knew that I was one of the, you know, six or seven houses applying, and, and I just assumed that if I was supposed to stop immediately and contact renters, I, I would have been informed to do that. So, I apologize I didn't do that. But I did take it down as soon as I knew that I wasn't supposed to do it. My guests have been using the community beach without incidents during the last year. However, on June 29th this year, CBCC board member Lorraine Trice approached my tenants and told them that they could not be on the beach except in the company of an owner. My tenants told her that I had informed them that I had a deeded right to use the beach and that it was okay for them to be there. And again, I think you gentlemen have mentioned this is a legal issue that will be resolved in the future. Apparently, a police officer was called and informed my tenant that posted signs said they could not be there. My tenants informed me of the situation and peacefully left the beach. They then informed me they wanted to leave early, and I offered to give them a full refund of their payment based upon their experience. Based on the officer's instructions, I will not be letting any non-family future guests who are not accompanied by me use the beach until such time as I might obtain a court ruling invalidating the CBCC bylaws amended late last year. I personally do not believe that they could survive a legal challenge, but that is, you know, not before your board, that's between me and CBCC. I strongly believe the people who rent their property can peacefully coexist in Chesapeake Beach Estates with people who choose not to rent their property. In fact, many people who now oppose renters may in the future change their minds out of a financial need. So, I applaud you for supporting people's right to rent their property. I also strongly believe that any opposition to short-term renters is not based upon, or, to my, any opposition to my rental is not based upon any negative experience, but rather to the belief that, that these renters are changing the character of the neighborhood. And I disagree. I think we can all work together. I think a few houses renting their property has no impact on this wonderful community of CBCC where people do, as everybody has testified, they, they love each other, they get together, they have all these events, but it's not required to participate with them if, if, you know, I, I applaud the community, but I'm not impacting it at all by renting my house when I'm not using it. Yeah, so that's, that's how, that's why I would like to sincerely hope that you would approve my CUP request with any conditions that you prefer to put on it, and I will abide by all of them. Thank you.
All right, any board members having any questions? Hold on, sir. Hold on just a second, sir. Any board members having any questions before we open the public hearing?
I got one, and I really don't have anything to do with what you just said, but it's something just that caught my attention. You reached out to someone in the county and, and you did not get a reply back regarding him?
Yeah, the CUP, yeah, I, I emailed, I emailed the county through, through, through your website. I first went to your website and looked for a CUP application, and I didn't find it. And this is, this is a minor point, but I, you know, I did find it, so I, so I emailed and didn't get a response. So, it was a neighbor who gave me their form. But that just shows I was intending to comply and was never told not to rent. No one told me not to do that. Then I apologize for renting, if indeed I was not supposed to after the last hearing. But at the end of the last hearing, you did not, when you approved the CUP, you did not say anything, I was there, that those of us who were renting needed to stop. And if you did, and if you did say it, I, I did not hear it, and I missed that, but thank you.
I apologize if you didn't get a response back from the county. Did you email an individual or through the website?
I went through the website.
We did have that issue, though, remember. We had, we had some internet issues or email issues.
That's bad, though.
Again, a very minor point, but I just.
No, that's not mine. We should answer, we should answer.
Well, the problem is we were having email issues with ourselves. We did not get stuff ourselves. And it probably was around the same time.
Yep.
Technology never works, never not works, right?
So, what else is new?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions? If not, thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you very much.
Open the public hearing. All right, going to open the public hearing now. The only person on the sign-up sheet that has not spoken is Joseph Young. Yes, you did. I'm sorry, sir. Yes, you did. Anyone else like to speak?
I'd like to, but I've already spoken.
You've already spoken, yes, ma'am. All right. Anybody in the virtual world like to speak?
This is Liz Allen again, but I haven't spoken about Mr. Forster. Can I speak?
No, ma'am.
I'll tell your attorney.
No, ma'am, you've already spoken on these issues unless you have some additional information to add. Yeah.
I do have additional information to add, sir.
All right. I'll take your additional information.
He is still actively advertising on TripAdvisor, and I've already sent the information just now to Mr. Marston and Mr. McKenzie. So for his, I didn't know I wasn't supposed to advertise or keep renting, he is still actively renting. Have a good night. Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you, ma'am, for the information. All right. Anyone else would like to speak tonight that has not already spoken unless you have additional information? Yeah. If you have additional information, allow you to speak.
I'm very frustrated. I think most of us are here. We've been coming for months. There's been many of us. We've emailed, we've emailed, we've called, we've met, we've shown up at every meeting for months. And they've shown up one time, I think at the, some of them at the PC meeting. And it's like, they can speak for as long as they want to. We can speak one time and just have one voice. But unless, thank you for saying, unless you have additional information, you're believing what they say. It feels like you're believing what they say and just passing it on to another meeting when we've, we've come. Look how many people were here tonight. We've shown up. And, and we're tired, too. We have to work tomorrow, too. I mean, it's, it's so incredibly frustrating. And I didn't hear you say 30 minutes, 30 seconds left to some of them to come up. And, and I apologize, but yet I don't apologize because I'm frustrated. And I think that you really need to consider the process and reevaluate it and then give us some insight as to what to expect and when it's continued for the next meeting.
All right. You know, Ms. Pence?
Yes, sir.
The applicant is not restricted to four minutes.
Okay, thank you. I did not know that.
That's the difference, that applicant can take longer.
Because we ask them questions that may take away from their presentation, too.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay, I get that, and I get that.
That's the difference right there.
It's, it's, and thank you for saying that. It's frustrating not knowing the policies, the protocols, or what have you, and then saying that you can't speak and then having Mr. Gregory say unless you have something to add to it after you've already been told you can't speak to someone on something. So, thank you.
And Ms. Pence, we look at these applications here, and there have been written requests, and they're all sitting right in front of us. So your request is there, everybody else is that sent a written, a written request in is sitting here in front of us. So we have all of that.
I know that you do. I think the frustrating part is...
It's your comments that you made. You know, we have every bit, every bit of that.
Okay. Well, I'm confused as to why it's being continued. I'm tired of coming here. I'm not gonna lie.
We're all tired.
I know you are. God bless you all. Y'all have to do this every month, and I don't know how you do it. And, and I understand you're retiring soon, so, you know. I don't know how y'all do it, and we do appreciate very much, ever since we've been in this, we have a new appreciation and understanding of what y'all do. But that does not dismiss my frustration with why we're prolonging it again. And that's just being very honest.
Those additional information that we requested.
Okay.
With others.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Would anyone else like to speak?
I have additional.
You have additional information? Come on up, ma'am.
Lorraine Trice, I'm an existing member of the Chesapeake Beach Civic Club Board. And Mr. Forster made the comment that the bylaws were not right. And he has asked us, the board, to meet with him several times to work around the bylaws. The bylaws were passed, they are notarized. They, the land that the bylaws support is that beach area, which is owned by Chesapeake Beach Civic Club. So they are our bylaws. We have the right to put the signs up. We did, as you saw in the pictures. But yes, he was aware of the bylaws, but he decided that he wanted to try to do a workaround, which we did refuse. We stand behind them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. All right. Would anyone else like to speak?
I would like to add that Mr. Forster did vote on the bylaws. He was a member at the time and was allowed a vote. So he did vote on the bylaws, and he's now saying don't apply it to him. So he was part of that process, and it was a vote by majority. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? All right. Would anyone in the virtual world like to speak? Anyone in the virtual world like to speak that has additional, that has not spoken or has additional information?
I didn't quite hear you. I'm speaking. Here we go.
Hello? Hello?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi. My name is Terry Rose. I'm at 23 Chesapeake Beach Road. And I would like to speak to Mr. Forster's information. He has not volunteered for any of the club-raising fundraiser activities. And he, he talks about how he wants to participate in the community and bring the community together. I have not seen any evidence of that, and he has not participated in anything that I have seen this year. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Would anyone else like to speak tonight? Got any hands? All right. So if no one else wants to speak, I'm going to close the public hearing. Mr. Forster, would you like to make any other comments, sir?
Yeah, thank you very much. Just three issues. One, I do not advertise on TripAdvisor. Liz Allen's comments are incorrect. My house is only listed on VRBO, as I said, and I took it down. I think TripAdvisor is not a listing site. I have, yeah, it's not a listing site. So that's, that's not a criticism of me. That's a misinformation from her. Ms. Trice said that I was trying to work around the board. That is not true. I sent them an email asking to have a meeting with them to discuss how we could, to use your words, work together to avoid, you know, I always tell them what we were planning to do legally and how we tend to challenge some of their things. And the board said to me they'd be happy to meet with me, but they removed the bylaws as a subject we would be allowed to talk about. So, so the way she characterized it is not, is not true. And then I forget what the third one was, but, uh, then we, I'll, I'll stop there. Thank you very much.
You have, you stated in your comments and also in your written comments, you state that you have a deeded right to use the beach. Because Trice says the Chesapeake Bay, Chesapeake Beach Association or whatever owns the beach.
That is actually, they, it's, I believe it's technically, well, no, it's incorrect because they do not own the beach. And, and this is the legal part of it. But the deed, the Chesapeake Beach Civic Association was deeded as a gift for three, three lots. And two of them are the picnic area, what they call the, the highland or whatever. And then one was the beach, and then there was a little road between the two. But the deed that was given to Chesapeake Beach Estates by an individual, his property would not perk. That's why he abandoned the property and gave it to the club. But the deed that they, even my deed, of course, as I have a, a deeded right to the, a beach, and there is no HOA there. The deed that they've got, that gave them the beach, says in capital letters, not, not, you know, describes all the legal stuff in small letters, and then it says, "This gift is given expressly to all the owners in Chesapeake Beach Estates." So the intent, and you should, well, that's not for you to look at.
No, it's not.
Courts will look at it. The reason why it's important is, um, um, yeah, exactly. It's, it's very important because the intent was to, not to give the beach to the club, i.e., only club members then would able, be able to use the beach. The intent of the deed that the association has, this, they were giving it to, to take care of it as if it were community property, like all other community property. So their attempt to stop owners from using the beach under certain conditions is, I think, patently illegal, unlawful, and will not stand the test. And I, quite frankly, have been trying for months to get an attorney. Attorneys are like hard, they don't even return your phone calls. Amazing. But I've been trying to, I tend to litigate against the club. But that's on the issue related, but until, until a court rules that my understanding of these deeds is accurate, I will accept the club's understanding of that and will comply with those rules because a police officer told me I had to do that, so I will.
How many bedrooms do you have?
Three bedrooms, three full bedrooms. I don't have like bunk beds in there. They each have a queen and a king-size bed. One, one bed in each bedroom, and each bedroom has a full bathroom. Got three bathrooms. So it's very comfortable for, for, I get, I get couples staying there. I get families with their children. I get families with the mother or the, you know, children staying there. They each get a different floor, so it's, it's a, it's a beautiful house. And I, you know, I consider my house, it's one of the nicest houses in Chesapeake Beach Estates, and I consider it a community asset. In other words, if people want to rent my house from me because they have, they need it, it's a beautiful house, it's right there, I will rent it to people in the community, you know, for, for, you know, family and friends' rent. I mean, that's not the point. This house is a beautiful house. It has served its function well. I've had two neighbors actually ask me if they can rent my house in, from the community. And I've said yes, of course.
Then do you have sufficient off-street parking space with three bedrooms?
Yes, I do. It, I have two lots side by side, and one lot I'm, is not used. There's no development on it at all. And so there's parking there, and there's also parking right in front of my house, off-street, completely off-street.
All right. Any board members have, any other board members have any questions? All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right. What's your pleasure, the board?
Sir?
Public hearing has been closed, ma'am. All right. What's your pleasure, the board?
I'll, I'll make a motion. We carry it over.
Make a motion, carry it over. Do I have a motion, carry it over? Do I have a second? All right. I've got a motion, second. Any other discussion? If not, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those against. Forster, we're going to carry that one over till next month. All right.
And Mr. Forster, if you could get your, copy your deed to Mr. Marston and Ms. Trice, or somebody can get a copy of the, the deed for the beach to Mr. Marston. Not that we're going to get into the issue, but just to see what's going on.
All right. Next is a request by Pamela and, John and Pamela Woodrum.
Yes, sir. We have a request by John and Pamela Woodrum, owners, for a conditional use permit to allow vacation home rental on property zone R3 residential restricted. Property is shown as taxman parcel 45B-3-7-25 and is located at 204 Chesapeake Street in Fleaton Beach subdivision.
Yes, sir. How are you doing, sir?
I'm well, thanks. I'm John Woodrum. My wife Pamela and I own a home at 204 Chesapeake Street in Fleaton. Four years ago, we were looking for a place as a getaway for our six grandchildren, as well as supplemental income. I'm getting ready to retire. The previous owners we bought the home from, had indicated to us that they also Airbnb'd the home. So, you know, we thought it was a great fit. This is our home. We vigorously screen the people that come into our home. I heard someone earlier say she rented from Airbnb and they didn't screen her. As an owner of an Airbnb, we can see everybody who wants to rent the home. If they don't have significant feedback from previous renters, we won't rent to them. We want to be good neighbors to the people in this development. If, if somebody comes to us and wants to rent the home and they have no feedback, we don't rent to them. End of discussion. We don't want a lot of the problems we've heard tonight. We have it listed as a quiet, family-friendly neighborhood, so those are the people that we want to attract to our home. We, we send out a welcome message, as well as a guest book that explains house rules. And one of the main things we stress is that our guests are respectful of our neighbors' noise levels and, you know, please don't walk through other people's lawns, so forth. We have a golf cart. It's not included in the rental. We feel like we're an asset to the community. We employ a housekeeper. A gentleman does our lawn. We've had, in the past four years, we've done a lot of work on the home. Last summer, we totally redid the bathroom in the home, spent, I believe, $5,000, $6,000 with local people. We, we want to, we want to be good neighbors, and it's very important to us. And we feel like we've developed relationships with mo, with most of our neighbors. Obviously, there are some that don't like short-term rental. I, I get it. But it's our intention to be a good neighbor. And we want guests that are going to treat our home like it's their home. We just had, the last guest was a family from Akron, Ohio. Prior to that, we had a professor and her family. Prior to that, we had a couple from Sweden. These are all great tenants, you know, and as far as I know, they haven't created any problems. We, my wife manages the property, and she's a super host. And that means you maintain a certain level of feedback from the people that stay in your... And that means you maintain a certain level of feedback from the people that stay in your home. And that's important to us also. I don't, I don't have anything else to add.
All right, okay. Board members having any questions?
How many bedrooms do you have?
Three.
And do you have sufficient off-street parking to handle?
We do.
So you go along with the board members pretty good, huh?
I'm sorry?
You get along with the board members good? You attend the meetings or?
This is, this is a different, this is a different subdivision.
This is a different development.
This is Fleaton Beach.
Okay, Fleaton.
But we do have an association, and we have been to a meeting, and to my knowledge.
Pay our dues?
Pay our dues.
Okay.
It's voluntary. The dues are voluntary, but we pay them, just like I think most people do. We want to support our community, you know, as much as we can.
All right. Any other board members have any questions? If not, thank you, sir. We will be coming back to you. Open the public hearing now. The oldest one that I have on here that has not spoken is Jason Hayden.
How you doing tonight? Jason Hayden, 240 Chesapeake Street, next door to John and Pam. I bought the house down there about two years, actually a single-wide trailer. Bought it about two years ago.
I saw you.
What's that?
I saw you the other day.
Okay, yeah. Bought it about two years ago. I've got five kids, wanted a quiet place to get away with. I've had nothing but issues with the guests they've had next door ever since they started renting over there. They're always trespassing through yards, walking all over. They say the welcome email says they can do that. I guess for me, today, I was down on the beach with the kids. It was a couple over there now. It was four children, and they were spread out all over our entire, you know, the small beach we've got. So it's hard to do anything with my family, which is what I purchased the property for. As far as cleanliness and stuff, there's always a lot of trash left on the beach, holes and stuff that are never filled in from guests, which pose threats to elderly couples. That's probably really all, and really just, you know, I don't support this. If y'all do grant a cup for them, I would like to ask that they have put up an eight-foot privacy fence, a small section of their yard. I'd like to see that continued all the way to the road. Because from me to you, I can be standing with somebody that I don't even know when they get out of their vehicle, because it is very small lots in there, just like Chesapeake Beach. That's really all I have. Thank y'all.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Yes. Yes, sir.
You have it. Ma'am, I don't know which one of y'all's put your hand up. She did, all right.
You're a co-owner.
Yes.
She's co-owner.
Yeah, she can come back later.
Hold on just a minute, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Pam Woodrum. When we bought our house, the house that he's speaking of, the trailer he's speaking of, was vacant for years and overgrown. And so the first couple of years, our residence, there was a shortcut through that back area to go to the beach. And Sue Carroll, who I met when we first moved there, had lived there for a while and said that, actually, the bylaws say you can walk wherever you want. So we didn't think it was a big deal. After he moved in and spoke about people cutting through, we put up a fence in the back there, an eight-foot fence, and put in our book that there was no walking through anyone's yard to be respectful of other people's property, and... I just, it just blows my mind. I'm going to read a couple of the reviews that we get. "We were looking for a beach that wasn't so packed and touristy. This is exactly what we got. The beach was so beautiful and peaceful. It's small, but that's what we wanted." "The house was decorated, so we love the decor." Kids, the kids' area made my kid, okay, that's not important. Another one. "We thoroughly enjoyed our getaway. The place is in a family-friendly neighborhood with a short walk to a small beach, perfect for our children. The community was very welcoming and made sure that we knew that. Our family of four had a great stay at Pam's place. The house, the rooms, the toys and games provided, and the beach were all very family-friendly. We would definitely stay there again. The kids were sad to leave. Wonderful place to relax, have fun in the water, and enjoy the scenery." These are how our reviews are, because we have families that come, and they want to come to a quiet, safe neighborhood. And that's who, as far as trash, and we don't see that. People, people are respectful. Again, we get people that have many reviews. So the people that I look at, that I allowed to stay in the house, have to have many five-star reviews and be written about by other renters. So I know that they are going to take care of our home. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you.
Actually, the people that are coming tomorrow, Friday, are owners in Fleaton Beach. They're coming because they have extended family, and they don't have room in their house. So they're staying in our house. And they are the third residents of Fleaton Beach that have stayed in our house. I know that many of the people that I've met and talked to do not have a problem at all with us Airbnb-ing. My neighbor is not one of them, unfortunately.
Do you know or not whether any of your renters are actually trespassing on his property?
Again, when he first bought the trailer, he let us know that we had, there were people walking through maybe a little portion of his yard. And I let everyone know after that that you cannot walk through other people's yards at all. And so I know there has not, plus now, he has multiple signs up all across his yard. "No Airbnbs wanted, go away." Yeah, so a number of the renters have mentioned, you know, the unnerving signs in the yard, and they have still left five-star reviews.
They're upset that he's exercising his First Amendment rights?
Well, it's a little scary. The signs, well, they're all, they're like, a lot of them.
It's his right, he's going to do that.
Absolutely, absolutely. And like I say, sure, sure.
Just like if you want to put one in, I support it. That's the First Amendment right.
Surely, surely. But it is a little unnerving for people that, you know, "Go away. We don't want you." So it's a little unnerving for people that do come. But they, like I said, they have still left five-star reviews because everyone is still so friendly and welcoming.
Even have one, one person has a right to their castle, so to speak.
Right, as we do to do with it, what we will.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ma'am?
My name is Sunshine Hutchison, and I'm a homeowner at 21 Remy Street on Fleaton Beach. I'm strongly against the use of short-term rentals in our private community. It's just that, private. These people renting this location are not our neighbors, and they do not care, or are they personally invested in our community? They are not required to disclose if they are registered offenders either, regardless of the feedback they get, based on previous stays. We have a posted speed limit sign that the majority of their renters do not follow. This excess speed not only puts our children at risk, but it also puts excess wear and use on our roads. They also state that there's street parking available, which our roads are not set up for. This rental is rented more than it is used personally by the homeowners. We, as a community, are left responsible to take the burden of what these short-term rentals leave behind during their stay and after they leave. The income these short-term rentals receive do not go back into the community to help keep the roads and maintain our community amenities, nor is there any time donated on their end to help upkeep. I am the fourth generation to grow up in this community. My children are the fifth. All I am asking is that our private community stay private and is not open to any short-term rentals, so that our private community stays a family-oriented, private community for many more generations to come. I would like to address that they stated their home is a three-bedroom. It is a two-bedroom with a living room that has beds in it. So I'd also like to consider what is considered a bedroom versus just a room that has a bed in it. As they keep mentioning that their home is getting reviews, and how they care about what their home looks like, none of it states what they care about the community, what it's doing to that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Got any additional information?
She covered a lot of what I said, but, I mean, what?
Would you state your name again for the record, please?
Oh, yes, I'm so sorry. Dawn Roland. And what else did you want?
Any address, please.
21 Remy Street, Reedville.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Actually, before I start, I think that it may be beneficial if you guys rented one of these Airbnbs in these communities and saw firsthand what went on, rather than we've been through hours of people saying this and that. That's a suggestion. And you guys get taxes. The county, the county gets taxes from the Airbnbs. We don't, as a community, see any of that. Our community's private. We maintain our own roads, seawalls, and several water access areas. We don't get any compensation for the extra funds needed for extra upkeep on the road, seawalls, and water access. And that pretty much sums up what I had to say, although I'd like to add, if you're not part of the solution, you're part of the problem, please help us in our, in the communities in Northumberland County, where we're on top of one another, figure out a solution separate than the rest of the county, I guess. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right, would anyone else like to speak? Yes, sir.
My name is Howard Hirsch, and I live at 69 Remy Street in Fleaton Beach. And I've got the same concerns that so many people have addressed y'all with today. And I hear both sides of everything. And these people that say how good their tenants are, are not there to police them. They don't know what's going on with them. We've got properties down in Fleaton Beach that people have had, bought it, used it for Airbnb, sold it to other people, and kept one lot, and moved to Reedville or Fleaton, and told the people from there, they could come down and use our beach, which crowds it up. I don't feel like that this is right at all. And you hear people talk about these little honey holes that they got out here, where so many of them stink. I don't, I don't agree with the Airbnbs at all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. All right, would anyone else like to speak? Anyone else like to speak? All right, would anyone in the virtual world like to speak tonight?
Can you hear me? I would.
Yes, I can hear you.
Hi. My name is Elizabeth Ream. My husband and I have owned two properties on Chesapeake Street in Fleaton Beach since 2005. And like anyone who owns any form of real estate, we are concerned with our property values. Let me say that if any owner inside of Fleaton Beach wanted to sell their property, that the applicants of this conditional use permit, the Woodroms, their house would stand out to their potential buyers as being well-maintained and of value to the neighborhood. None of us is going to live forever. My point in saying this is that eventually every single property in Fleaton Beach will change hands. They will either be sold or handed down to heirs, as has been done with a lot of the properties. For the board to disallow short-term rentals in Fleaton Beach will negate any future owner or inheritor the option to recoup the costs to maintain or update properties in the neighborhood. There are properties in Fleaton Beach that are in a sad and dangerous state of disrepair. What's the alternative? What will disallowing any and all future short-term rentals in Fleaton Beach result in? I believe, I'm confident, it will result in complete full-time residential buyers, full-time residents with no limitations on housing capacity, none. Knowing that neither themselves nor their future heirs can ever rent their dwelling will result in future buyers being year-round residents, purchasing into a neighborhood that was never meant full-time living. These are trailer-sized lots. Disallowing short-term rentals by the Board of Supervisors will result in cramming the community ultimately with full-time residents. These, there are neighborhood wells in the community. There is not infrastructure for full-time residents in every dwelling. In our 18 years of experience in the neighborhood, Fleaton Beach is a live and let live community. I'm here to tell you, poor behavior is not limited to short-term renters. Demolition by neglect surrounds the Woodroms property. We have experienced feeders. We've heard gunshots. Family members of owners who don't pay taxes use the beach as their open-air summer locker space and trashcan. Whatever behaviors are denied for renters should be denied for all, though I do understand that that is not the job of the Board of Supervisors tonight. Since its inception, we participated in the voluntary HOA, which not everyone does in Fleaton Beach. We stopped doing so when we found out that they used collected money that was meant for road maintenance and used it for funds to hire an attorney to figure out how to disallow short-term rentals. They should have used money to clean up some parts of the community. So in summary, we don't like strangers as a mentality is not a good enough to reason to disallow short-term rentals in Fleaton Beach. If you drive through Fleaton Beach, you will see that some owners are not at all concerned about property values. Property value in real estate is the foundation of real estate. And it is a vast space of Northumberland County. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, anyone else like to speak?
This is Dave Miller, virtual speaker. I don't know if you can hear me?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yes, I live on 63 Julian Street, and my property is catty-corner to John and Pamela. Our backyards actually touch. But I was a little bit surprised to hear Elizabeth speak that way. She, she sold the property to John and Pamela, and she maintains a house down Fleaton Road that is not in Fleaton Beach, but to my knowledge, still sends people to our beach that are renters on her property, and also does not any longer pay any maintenance fees for our roads or the beach. I feel that John and Pamela are great people. I've talked to them several times. We bond well, but in listening... We're listening.
Sir, we lost you. We lost you. We lost you. Microphone's off. All right, would anyone else like to speak tonight? Got anybody else? Anyone else like to speak tonight?
Just to finish up real briefly, I was, my internet connection lost, if that's okay. But anyhow, our beach is a hundred and eighty feet. It's shared by eighty homes, and we are a group of people that have family connections there and know that there's maybe twelve full-time residents. The rest of us own property there and are there part of the time. Again, John and Pam are great people, but I'm looking toward the issue in general, what happens if we have five or ten of these rentals? Then we've got a serious problem in a very small space. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Anyone else? All right, I'm close the public hearing. Mr. Forrester, would you like to have any closing comments?
Mr. Woodrum.
No, not Forrester. Woodrum, I'm sorry. I'm thinking of something different. Mr. Woodrum, would you like to have any closing comments? All right. I don't think he's read the conditions here.
They're the same thing as the others.
They're all the same thing, but-
Same thing.
Yeah. All the conditions are the same for all of the applicants that we've had tonight on the short-term rentals only. All right, what's the pleasure to board?
I'm going to move that we, we carry over.
All right, got a motion to have second?
Second.
Got a motion to second? Any other discussion?
I would recommend that the adjacent property owners get together and see what anything could be worked at. I understand that, but that's going to give an opportunity that's on both sides need to discuss. Obviously, he mentioned the possibility of a privacy fence. That may be something that you could consider. That's what I'm saying. It gives, as with the one that was approved, communication. And obviously, again, he has a right to put what he objects to, but if a fence could make his powerful, then that would be helpful. No, I'm saying, he obviously is talking about from the back of his line out to the road.
I just planted six-foot bushes to be like a bush fence.
Yeah, but bush fence would take a while, too.
But I don't think by law you can have an eight-foot fence in front of your house. I think it has to be-
Mr. Marston could tell you how tall that would be.
No, I think it has to be like four-foot, right?
No, it's taller than that.
We don't have a regulation on that. There's no permit required. I stopped where I did because I thought you couldn't have an eight-foot fence go all the way to the road. You can't where I live anyway.
Absolutely you can. It has to be out of the right of way, but-
That's fine.
Yeah, but if y'all could work things out, that would make it easier for everybody. So, that's my comments, and I call for vote.
Got to work things out.
All right, any other comments? If not, all those in favor say aye. All right, that's all the public hearings for tonight. Mr. Tadlock, you have some information you want to go over?
I do have several time-sensitive matters that we do need to take care of tonight.
All right, let's take care of them.
All right, the first item is related to the memorandum of agreement with the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Regional Radio System.
That's what I wanted to get worked on.
And this is an agreement with King and Queen, Essex, Richmond, Matthews, and Lancaster County. The attorneys have reviewed this, and I believe that it's all in a format ready to move forward.
All right, Mr. Gregory, has all this satisfy you?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Ladies and gentlemen, we're trying to have a meeting right now. Come on, quiet down, ladies. We're still having a meeting.
That was it, sorry.
You can stay if you want, but you've just got to be quiet.
You're welcome to stay.
As I was mentioning, Mr. Chairman, yes, absolutely. I have reviewed the MOA that's been collaboratively drafted with King and Queen County and Lancaster County attorneys and others. It's in good order. I feel confident it's in good shape and ready for approval.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve this MOA.
All right, I have a motion to have second. I got a motion to second. Got any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you.
All right, next item I have is the authorization of representation as outlined in the memorandum of agreement. The regional radio system manager, or the system manager, serves as the overall radio system executive officer, and their duties include overseeing the function of the system, coordinating and managing issues which may arise among participating counties and representing the system at local, state, and federal levels. There's a document in the, in your documents that designates the system manager as Greg Hunter. I would just need the board to move forward with that as well.
I don't have a problem. The only question is, in the event Mr. Hunter was no longer with King and Queen County, what's, or if something happens, what is the process of replacement?
The committee will appoint someone else. I just want to make sure. Let's go ahead and move forward, but it was something else someone-
I move that we adopt this, assuming it's in good order.
Approved, it is. It's fine.
All right, I got a motion to second. Any other discussion on to it? If not, all those in favor say aye.
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 I'm sorry, who seconded that? Mr. Marston, thank you.
We need to appoint a project manager on behalf of the county.
For the L3, you're referring to the L3 Harris installation?
Yes, yes, I am, sir. But I understand that Mr. Hunter is the old project manager for the system and has been on along since it's been created, but each county has to have, I believe it says in there, two representatives, carry two votes. We need them.
Yeah, that's in the MOA.
Yes.
That, where they-
They can make the appointments now if they want in the way.
Yeah, that can be done now, or we can do that at a later time if you wish.
They can do that, too. That's fine, but just, we just need to get that taken care of.
All right, and the next item we have is, actually, we have Wayne Duff that's on the phone, and he's been patiently waiting for us. You have a resolution in your packet related to the sole source procurement process of the L3 Harris contract. In discussions earlier, we had anticipated having the financing, finance closing this week that has been moved to next Wednesday. So, we have some additional language that kind of coordinated with Mr. Gregory here to add to that, subject to the closing on the bank loan to finance the acquisition and to final approval by the county administrator and the county attorney. I know that there were several other questions by Mr. Brand as well. I don't know if Mr. Wayne Duff can speak to those specifically, or if he's still online there.
He's probably asleep. Good people, I think.
Mr. Duff, are you online, sir? Mr. Duff? Is he on?
Yes, sir. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir, we can certainly hear you.
I apologize. I've been talking on mute. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. Thank you for allowing me to attend virtually, and if there are any questions, I'd be very, very happy to answer those. I'd also like to ask, if I may, if Mr. Hunter by chance is online, in case some questions may be related to the regional system concept.
Mr. Hunter, are you online tonight? Mr. Greg Hunter? You online?
Yeah, that's okay. I mean, if there are questions that I can't answer, we can certainly get those answered. But I do want to thank you all for reviewing this matter, and we are certainly eager to move forward with the project. Everyone has worked very hard on behalf of the county, and I want to commend them. And if there are any questions, Mr. Braun or any members of the board, I'll be glad to try to answer them.
All right, any board members have any questions?
Give mine to Latrell.
All right, any other board member have any questions? Staff have any questions?
Mr. Duff, related to the three questions that we had earlier, was there any particular updates or anything that we could possibly resolve specifically on those?
Would these be the issues in the email? I think one was dealing with project personnel, another one with coverage, you know, RF coverage requirements, and the other one's escaping me right now, but is that what we were talking about and the surety bond or performance bond?
No, the surety bond was a separate matter.
Okay.
These were the, I'm trying to pull them up here now. Let's see.
Yeah, and I can do the same. We are working, we actually will be providing the performance bond, and I'll be finalizing, you know, there is a little bit of cost associated with that. With the board's permission and review by staff, we will also add to the contract the requirement of the performance bond, which is a requirement to be in the contract to get one, if that makes sense.
Yes, sir, Mr., if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Duff, if you recall, I sent you an email with the specific language regarding the surety bonds, and if you could insert that into the contract, that would be perfect just to resolve that issue. And then, if you could provide to us confirmation that you've made those arrangements and what the cost would be, that would be appreciated so we can, because that can be rolled into the financing. If those costs are to be passed on to the county, we can roll that into the financing. So, we just need to know the number so that the financial advisors can make those arrangements.
Absolutely, and I did find out today it is one-half of a percent of the sale price. We just passed that through. I think it's sixteen thousand and some change. We'll get the exact number, and we will add that language to the contract for you all to review as it relates to the performance bond.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Mr. Duff?
Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, not at all. I was just wondering if we found it. I'm trying to pull up the email to make sure we can talk about those concerns.
Yes, sir, I did find those questions. The first one was an engineer needs to be assigned to Northumberland County from the beginning to the end, and no switching of the engineers. And then, there was some language there that liked to request, have wording in there that have the right to request to replace an engineer if they are not performing properly.
Absolutely, so, and I think, and I was hoping, you know, Mr. Hunter would be on this evening, but certainly, Mr. Braun can speak to some situations where I can certainly understand why that is being reviewed. I will assure you, and if we need some kind of a language in there that's mutually agreeable, we can try to draft that and work through that, but we will absolutely work with the county on personnel matters. The one thing we want to be careful on is, it's kind of difficult, you know, for me to say we will absolutely keep the same engineer on the project when you're talking about a project that's going to be eighteen months to, you know, maybe twenty, you know, twenty-four months, depending on how it goes. I think we've got an eighteen-month schedule, only because obviously, things could happen. That person could move on, they could get promoted, things could happen, but to the best of our ability, we want to keep continuity in the staff that we put on. Furthermore, Mr. Hunter has made it absolutely clear to management in L3 Harris for program management and for engineering services that with the addition of Northumberland County, Lancaster County, we are just starting the process to put the new site in Warsaw and Richmond, that we absolutely need to keep continuity of staffing because those people will understand the overall vision, mission, and what we're looking to achieve holistically with the system. So, we're absolutely going to do our best there. I just want to be mindful and realistic that things could come up that we can't control, but to the best of our ability, we will assign someone from beginning to end. And most definitely, if we have any of our staff, including myself, that's not performing to your expectations, then we're going to discuss that. If we can't resolve it, we're going to replace them. So, if we need to draft some kind of language like that for the contract, we can certainly work to try to do that. But, Mr. Braun, I know we've known each other for quite some time, and I hope you would understand that what I'm saying is sincere.
What, and I can't remember reading in the contract, but what process are y'all going to use this time for coverage testing? It's not going to be the beta system, correct? Remember the issues that Essex had with coverage testing the first couple of weeks?
I apologize, I don't, but we've outlined what the coverage test procedure will be, and, you know, the requirements for the signal strength. But, you know, we utilize the equipment that we have. It's called a typhoon, but I'm not, Jimmy, I don't remember exactly what took place there, but what we've been doing, you know, has worked extremely well. And in the event we do have any issues with the testing, we've got the, you know, the counties, right? We're installing a single simulcast cell for both counties, and the coverage testing consists of testing both counties and providing that guaranteed coverage, and we're testing half-mile grids. But, and I may not be answering your question clearly as far as whether we had issues with equipment, but I can assure you that the equipment that we're using is going to be functional. And if we do run into an issue, that's going to be, you know, unfortunately, that would be a little extra time on your behalf, but we're going to get it right. We're going to make sure we get it right. We're going to test every accessible grid and, you know, make sure we meet the coverage guarantee, and if we don't, if we fail testing, we're going to fix it, and that's going to be on our dime. And I apologize, Jimmy, I may not have answered your question because I don't remember the specific, you know, issues that we had. Not saying we didn't.
Mr. Hunter had replied to the question earlier today, and he had said that the CATP will be refined during DDR, but the standard is by booth-bounded county and by grid with limited adjacent grid failures.
Yeah, that's, if I may speak to that, that's very important, because if we're guaranteeing ninety-five percent of the bounded area of the county will be covered, and if we fail that, we'll fix it, right? But what we also don't want to have is that five percent, for example, be in one area. So, we are required not only to pass the ninety-five percent, but let's say we tested ninety-six percent, that four percent needs to be spread out throughout the county. There can't be a certain number of adjacent piles that fail, and I don't have that count right in front of me, but we'll make sure that we've got that adequate, you know, for industry standards. you know, for industry standards, for the county's comfort level. And rest assured, Mr. Hunter is going to make sure it's done right. And, you know, Mr. Braun is serving in a different capacity, but also has tremendous experience with what we've been through. And we will have issues, right? We will have things that aren't going to go perfect when dealing with technology that's ever-evolving, but we're going to stick by it, and we're going to work together to make sure that you've got the absolute best system we can provide.
And the last item was the equipment or components of the radio system. If it's damaged or it fails before the acceptance of the system, that it needs to be replaced and to not accept a repair of that equipment.
So, you know, again, I'm not going to state emphatically that that would be exactly what would happen. These are computer systems, so I'll give you an example, and I know exactly the example that we had before with Essex, Mr. Braun, and I'll even share that. So, let's say we've got a network switching center that's comprised of multiple switches and servers and routers, et cetera, and we have a particular component within that that fails at any time. It doesn't, you know, it doesn't have to be right at the beginning or before system acceptance. If it fails during the warranty period, if it fails during the maintenance period, we're going to repair it or replace it if we can't repair it. And if we have to remove a particular, say, server from a rack that's part of the network switching center, then we wouldn't replace the entire network switching center, we would replace the component that broke. And that's something that we would just ask that we work together, that we didn't have a blanket statement that if, you know, if there's a part that needs to be fixed, that we can't fix it, that we have to replace it. You know, we do have language in the contract that I kind of refer to, an analogy of like the lemon law. If we have something we try to fix twice and we can't fix it, we're going to replace it. But, you know, we'll need to talk through that, I want you all to be comfortable. And, Mr. Braun, if you want to speak more specifically to that, you know, please do, because, again, I want everybody to be comfortable that we're entering into an excellent contract, but also want us to be able to work together on whether or not we get a shot at fixing something versus replacing it. And I'll use another example, if, you know, if we're building a car and we have got a gasket that's leaking, we'd like to fix or replace the gasket, not replace the engine. I hope that makes sense.
Well, just remember, I can be stubborn.
No, no, you can't, you cannot be stubborn, sir. You can be holding us accountable, and for that, I'm grateful. I would never, I would never call that being stubborn.
All right, any board members have any more questions, or staff have any more? Mr. Duff?
All right, as long as that covers the questions that all the board members have, and if you all are agreeable, try and work out some of the details in those if you want to move forward with the specific resolution there. Again, it's just for the sole source of the radio equipment on the Middle Peninsula Northern Neck Regional Radio System, which is proprietary in nature, and L3 Harris Technologies would be the only company that would be able to perform those services. And again, we would just add to the end of that resolution that it would be subject to closing on the bank loan to finance the acquisition and to final approval by the county administrator and the county attorney.
I move we approve this resolution with the additional language that you just stated, Mr. Tadlock.
All right, got a motion to have second? Motion to second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those against?
All right, the next item is regarding the microwave network. And there again, it's the sole source resolution that you have in your documents. There again, the microwave network company is the only one that would be able to provide this service, and we would also ask that the same language that is subject to closing on the bank loan to finance the acquisition and to final approval by the county administrator and the county attorney be added to that resolution as well.
We'll move, what Mr. Tadlock stated.
All right, got a motion to second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. All those again.
Next item I have, as referenced to the fuel bids, we piggyback off of the school divisions' bids, and they have awarded that to NWP, actually, the only company that provided a bid this year at a variable rate.
Sole source too. Right now, it's really the sole source, so to speak, but it's my bid, so I move that we accept the bid.
All right, we got a motion, got a second? Got a motion to second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Some of these items we will cover Tuesday, if that's all you have for... Now, the time-sensitive item is the anti-litter committee grant. Mr. McKenzie has been working on that, the total grant request is $5,765.50. We are, the anti-litter committee is proposing a $600 match to that. I don't know that it requires a match, but we did, in the budget process, we did have $2,000 for the anti-litter committee, so they are using those monies to put towards the match, so there's no additional monies. But if we could have approval to move forward with that.
Motion to second, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Next item is the GIS VDEM grant, is in the amount of $3,000 that we would be applying for for the enterprise GIS software maintenance program.
Move for approval.
Motion, excuse me, motion to a second, any other discussion? Not, all those in favor say aye.
Next item is the emergency service zone changes that are needed for the next-generation 911. Basically, the state has designated certain areas for the counties, and with us sharing the bay, our boundary has extended out into the bay area. So, we have designated those areas as 257 and 258, which covers the VMRC and Fairfield's Fire for 257, Northumberland Rescue for 257, and Smith Point C Rescue. And 258 would be VMRC, Smith Point C Rescue, Kermark Volunteer Fire, and Volunteer Rescue.
All right, what's the pleasure of the board?
Board will approve.
I got a motion to second, any other discussion?
The only thing I will say is that the next emergency management meeting, I'm going to propose with consideration that 254, area 254, possibly be absorbed back by Fairfield's Fire and Northumberland Rescue, because one, that would give Mount Olive Road and then Crawford's Corner Road as boundaries either than going through the woods undefined, but that would take both fire departments, rescue squads in both counties to do it, but...
We can, we can...
It's very partially private, they have 20 homes in the area. Try to get tighter boundaries for dispatchers.
All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
All right, and the last item that I have for tonight is the internet connection for the sheriff's office for the upgrade. You have that contract in your packet. It would be a $19,200 annually, and that's for a dedicated line directly to the sheriff's office. We had some discussions regarding this during the budget discussions, but no formal action was taken. I was just looking, due to the contract amount, looking for formal action from the board.
And this is just internet, doesn't include phone lines?
This, our phone lines are internet-based, so this would cover...
The 911 is definitely distinct from the administrative line, is that correct? Okay, because administrative lines were down sometime this week, so... Four letter words. I move we approve this.
All right, got a motion to second, any other discussion? All right, no other discussion, all those in favor say aye.
You want to do the check register, pay some bills?
Check register.
Board will approve.
Unless you have something else, Luton.
That's all I have, that was going to be my last item.
Yeah, we want to pay some bills, I can tell you.
All right, check register. Everybody had a chance to look at it? Jim, you make motion?
Yes.
Tommy? All right, any other discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye. Any other items? Not, I'll entertain a motion, carry over to the 17th at 5:30.
We'll move.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Thank everybody for coming.
Go home and go to sleep.